Thank you. John Harabedian, Mayor. John Kapocha, Mayor Pro Tem. Council members Rachael Arizmendi. Denise Del Mar.
Present.
And Jean Goss.
Here.
Thank you.
Great. And we're having microphone problems. Councilmember Goss will lead us in the pledge and invocation.
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I composed a prayer tonight. Would you please join me in bow your heads? Dear God, as we come together tonight to find solutions to meet the challenges our community faces, we take this moment to reflect upon the blessings of the holiday season. This is the time of year when families, neighbors, and our whole community comes together to celebrate kindness and charity, generosity, goodness, brotherhood, and love. This is the time of the year when we all become children again, when the innocence latent in all of us comes to the surface and animates our lives. As we enjoy these blessings of the season, we pray for all those around the world suffering from poverty, hunger, disease, and oppression. We ask that you would bless them with deliverance and fill their hearts with hope. As the new year begins, we ask for your hand to guide us in governing our beloved town. We pray it is your will to end the drought and return to us the cleansing and replenishing rains. We look forward to a wonderful year and thank you for hearing this prayer. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Goss. Can we get a report out of closed session, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council met in closed session with legal counsel to discuss a matter of anticipated litigation. Direction was provided to the city attorney, but no action was taken.
Thank you very much. Can we get an approval of the agenda, please?
I approve that we approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. How about the minutes? Any changes to the minutes?
I have one little change.
Okay.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, on page 12 of 24, near the middle of the page, says, "Mayor Pro Tem Kapocha stated, 'I know it is not a good practice to mitigate landscaping.'" In between the words mitigate and landscaping, landscaping, insert arc by the use of...
Thank you.
Any other changes? Anything else? If not, take a motion for approval with that slight change.
You have to approve with the others.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mayor and City Council reports. I'll start on my right. Councilmember Del Mar.
Well, my council report consists of shopping. That's what I seem to do the last couple of weeks. I did go down to our Winter Fest and a big thank you to the chamber and especially Carol Canterbury who spent so many hours there. My daughter and I spent some time in the shops and I have, I can honestly say that the Sierra Madre economy is a lot better since we left those stores. And then we took my granddaughters down to see Santa and saw the Elf, the movie Elf, and we had a great time. Then on the second, I went to support the Sierra Madre Foundation. They too are having a little shopping fundraiser and so, once again, savor the flavor, had some wonderful appetizers for us, and my visa took another beating that day. But I did get most of my Christmas shopping done, I will say. I did. So, and also just to let everybody know that Councilmember Goss and I will be meeting with the 610 Baldwin folks tomorrow afternoon. So have a hot holidays and be safe.
Great. Councilmember Goss?
Not much. I did go to the senior committee commission last week and as the council liaison, and I am looking forward to that meeting tomorrow afternoon with Councilmember Del Mar over 610 Baldwin Court.
Great. Councilmember Arizmendi.
Jean, I have a report at this time.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Nothing to report.
And me neither. We'll go on to public comment for items not on the agenda.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, my name is Paul Hovsepian. I live on Mountain Trail. I've lived in the community for about 11 and a half years and I've come to tell the council about a dangerous traffic situation. And it happens to be on the intersection of Highland and Mountain Trail. I live, I live on Mountain Trail between Highland and Laurel. And what happens, between 7:30 and 8:00, there's a lot of school traffic, people taking their children to the school on the east side there that's being built, but kids are still going to school there, bringing, then crossing the street. There's a lot of heavy traffic, people going south on Baldwin to go to work, and also some people going north. There's just a, it's a two-way stop. It's, there's no stop like there is over on where Highland crosses Baldwin where we now put the stop, which has made an incredible difference in controlling traffic and protecting pedestrians. A lot of people cross that, a lot of children cross that intersection, a lot of people with dogs cross that intersection, mothers with strollers. And at that time of the day, it's extremely dangerous. Also very dangerous because cars want to make left-hand turns and traffic is coming south and north and I've, I've seen some close calls, a lot of horn beeping. There's another thing is that just south of where Highland is, cars park so that if you're coming north, you can't see anybody who's on the, you know, getting ready to cross the street. And I've seen some kids try to cross, you know, and, and cars goes by. Besides that, people, the sidewalks are well painted, people don't stop. I stand there with my dog off of the curb and people just go right by, broad daylight. It's embarrassing and it's extremely dangerous and I don't think the city wants to have a tragedy of some child get hurt or some major traffic accident and it could be solved so easily. My three nuts up?
That's good.
Solved so easily by putting stops there. And I, I told Bruce Inman, I sent him an email about nine months ago, I got no response and nothing was done. And I implore you to look into this and do something. I'd like to congratulate you on where the facility is, that new building, that whole new thing is, is really beautiful. It's going to be really neat. And finally, thank you to the council and Public Works for, for putting in new pipes, replacing the water main pipes on, on Mountain Trail. It's 100-year-old pipes. These guys did a magnificent job in five weeks. It was so coordinated. They were nice people, the city and whoever you employed, and they did a great job. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Paul.
Good evening. I, I liked the prayer. I agreed with that very much. I've been a resident of Sierra Madre with my mother for over 30 years. You know, this is a tree city of the United States sweeping up her, her olives and her leaves and pulling up her palm fronds when we'd have a big, you know, storm, you know, because the palm fronds, they have stickers about nine inches to 12 inches long. You gotta wear thick gloves, but I get it, Arnold's, you know, pull those out when the city, when you have a big windstorm and the city called the trash trucks for free to take all the palm fronds. Anyway, I've been taking, my mother contracted leukemia and I was her in-home care person getting her groceries and medications. She passed away at 87 years old last November 14th, 2013. Well, my problem is that by law, my doctor had to call the elder abuse and the adult protective services of California. Then they said she had to call the police department, so she called the police department. That's fine. And I made a report there. See, the problem was when my father, a World War II veteran, died in 2010, my sister, through her crooked probate lawyers, that should be permanent together, embezzled or stole $852,000 from me. It's right here, if you want to look at the bank statement for a Redlands Community Bank. And all I got was $300 a month to take the 487 bus to California State University at Los Angeles and to buy my food. And I think at the age of 65 in February, I will graduate. I passed my last after eight years of college. But, so I didn't hear anything from the police department for about six months. They sort of, you know, I think they shined it on as long as somebody's not robbing the bank, you know, or some. But anyway, this morning, the nice detective, Ben Fernandez, called me, asked me to come in with my papers in the case. And I have a lot of faith in Detective Fernandez. He seems to be genuinely concerned and conscious about finishing my Sierra Madre police report so I could hand it to the courtroom. And I think this would genuinely make my sister scared where this unethical, greedy, lazy probate lawyer doesn't scare her one bit. I just want one simple request of favor. I thought if maybe one of the city council members could just write a little letter encouraging Detective Ben Fernandez to finish up my paperwork so I can take it to the courthouse or maybe even to the police chief, who I know, and I always greet him, this morning, I greeted him, I said, "We're the seventh safest city in California." And I always greeted him with the Fourth of July parades and the memorial parade ceremonies and stuff. And I was just thinking, I was really happy when council member Arizmendi was elected because of her. I tried to be politically informed. She seemed to have a resume of a lot of business experience or accounting. I'm sure all the council members have business experience in accounting, but if, I just was wish if someone, a council member, could just write a little letter of encouragement. I don't want to put any pressure on Detective Fernandez, but a little encouragement just to finish up, finish up my case.
Thank you very much, sir. You can wrap up, just a few seconds if you, if you have anything else, but...
No, I think that you got the...
Great. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
May I have your name?
Can we get your name for the record?
Cully Eby. My mother owned her home, Connie Francis, for 30 years here, and she's passed away. And I definitely recommend, if you want to save your soul and your heart and you have a family member getting ready, go to Great Work. Get a living trust.
Great.
Probate will kill you.
Thank you very much. Glenn?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am Glenn Putnam, one of your library trustees with our monthly report to you about goings-on at the library. On Thursday, December 18th, at 11:00 a.m., the Third Thursday Book Club is going to meet and everyone is invited to bring and discuss their favorite book of the year to the Adult Book Club on Thursday. Light holiday refreshments will be served. Then on Monday, December 22nd, at 10:00 a.m., we're going to have the Second Annual Mini Rose Floats Program. Children's from preschool to fourth grade are invited to decorate their own mini rose float based on a children's book. This year's theme is The Little Engine That Could and will also be the theme of the Rose, Sierra Madre Rose Float Entry into the Rose Parade. This is the third year of this popular program and we think that the Sierra Madre Rose Float, we thank the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association for providing the materials for the mini rose floats. Also, we have voted to grant two summer scholarships to some very deserving library staff. Megan Tosh and Christine Smart were both awarded $3,000. Megan is pursuing her Masters of Library and Information Sciences, attending online programming through the University of North Texas State. Christine is also pursuing her Masters of Library and Information Science degree and attending the online program through the San Jose State University System. And we'd like to say many thanks to the summers who established this fund in 1990 and over $18,000 has been awarded to local residents pursuing a library education. It's a very worthwhile program. Fourthly, the One Book One City Committee has selected The Long Goodbye by Raymond Chandler to be the One Book One City selection. And it was published in 1953 and featuring his famous detective, Philip Marlowe. Chandler called the novel "My Best Book," praised as a serious and significant mainstream novel that just happened to possess elements of mystery. It won the Edgar Award for the Best Novel in 1955. Get your copy now at the library. The holiday hours at the library are going to be, we will be open from 10 until 2 on Wednesday, December 24th. We will be closed from Christmas Day through January 1st and regular library hours will resume on Friday, January 2nd. Lastly, the art and essay contest for the K grades through eighth grade will be conducted during the month of February with winners given certificates on St. Patrick's Day. Mayor Harabedian, I would like to personally invite you to hand out the certificates to the winners on March 17th. And I would like to invite the rest of city councils to be there and cheer him on as he does this wonderful act for our children here in town. And that is everything I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll see you. March 17th.
I need the last name of Christine. I didn't get it. S.M.A.R.T. Thank you.
Tag team.
Tag team. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and City Manager. My name is Amy Putnam, 630 Oatcrest Drive. I'm actually here in the capacity of President of the Sierra Madre Historical Preservation Society. And, excuse me, I don't know how many of you received our newsletters this past fall, but I brought a copy for each of you tonight. This is an exceptional newsletter that we put out for the fall. It features the library on the cover and so I thought he, I could follow Glenn since he was talking about the library. This newsletter also talks about the history of the library from its founding in 1887 up until the present time. It talks about the teen docent program that we've had for the last couple of years. It talks about the research requests that have come to the archives over the last about six months or so, which are quite interesting. It talks about the local history collection at the library. So, and there's lots of nice pictures, too. So it makes for some good reading. And so that's my segue from Glenn, but I also want to let you know that the historical society is going to have their annual holiday party this, excuse me, Thursday, not this Thursday, but Thursday, December 18th at the Hart Park House at 7:15. This year, the program is going to be Nat Reed, who is the author of Don Bonito Wilson, Mountain Man to Mayor. And he's going to talk about his book, which fills a long missing gap in the record of Southern California history. The biography of Don Bonito Wilson, excuse me, documents the life of one of the most significant pioneers of Los Angeles. He was the grandfather of General George Patton. And Wilson is almost unknown today except for the prominent local peak that we all fondly have here, Mount Wilson. There's much more, however, to the legacy of this historic figure. Mr. Reed, besides being a fantastic author of five books, is also a professional public speaker. He is a retired Navy captain, a stand-up comic, and former LAPD Reserve policeman who worked undercover vice in Hollywood and gang suppression in South Los Angeles. So you don't want to miss this year's holiday party, but here's the catcher. This party is for members and their guests. However, if you are not a member, we will most graciously sell you a membership, which only start at $20 for an individual membership or $25 for a family. You do need to RSVP and you RSVP to Leslie Ziff, who is the Vice President of the Historical Society. Her phone number is 626-321-7735, or you can email her at lbziff@roadrunner.com. Or if it's easier for you, just to let me know, I'll be glad to take your reservation and pass the information on. So we, we hope to see you all there. We're going to have our smorgasbord of desserts and libations and a good time should be had by all. It's really quite fun. It's at the Hart Park House on Thursday, December 18th at 7:15. Hope to see you there.
Quick question. Is Leslie and her singing troupe performing?
No.
Okay. Not this year?
Not this year.
Okay.
Program is not ready this year.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members of Sierra Madre. My name is Jeremy Schlittenhart and I work with MBI Media as a representative of Metro. And I wanted to speak tonight to provide residents and yourselves with a brief update on the SR710 Environmental Impact Report Study that's currently taking place. Currently, and again, there's collateral in front of you as well, if you could reference that as well, or obviously take it with you. We're studying five alternatives right now and we're studying each of those alternatives equally. So there's no preferred alternative at this time. So again, no decisions have been made, but I wanted to let people know that we anticipate the release of this draft to take place in early 2015, most likely beginning to mid-March, at which point there will be a 90-day public comment period. Typically, we have about 60 days for the public comment period because, but because this is such a contentious study, we're allowing 90 days for that. After that, there'll be two public hearings that'll take place on this subject. We do not have the dates or times for those public hearings yet, but we will let you know as soon as we get those. If people want to get more information, they can go to metro.net backslash SR710study. It lists out all our fact sheets, public meetings, ways in which they can get involved to be a community liaison, things like that. But again, I just want to let people know that this is a very important process in the study and that residents do have a voice in this. So again, I left some collaterals in the back as well, and I can also provide you with some information as well to post on your website for residents to find out, just so they know what's taking place. I think the, the misnomer out there is we're actually going forward and building this. We're not. We're, we're just taking, we're taking environmental impact study right now to see what the best alternatives might be, and then from there, with public input, we'll decide on, on what we think is the best route moving forward. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? All right. Well, before we move on to the presentation to answer Mr. Hovsepian's concern about Mountain Trail and Highland, we actually conducted a stop sign study last year for that, for that exact site, and it was at the exact same time that we put in the Baldwin and Highland stop sign. And it turned out, based on our engineer's report, that the amount of traffic that we get there did not justify a stop sign and therefore we didn't put one in. But we have looked into it and I think all of us were a bit surprised. It's a very, it's a very common route for folks going up and down and probably has become a little bit more common now that the stop sign was put in at Baldwin, but we've taken a look there and I don't think anyone disagrees that it's somewhat precarious intersection, but...
Thank you for coming. It's scary, bit scary.
Yeah. And I know, I know the chief who's back there did, has made that, that part of the city, you know, a place where we've added watch and, and paid extra attention to because of that. So there is extra enforcement there at times. So, you know, we always encourage folks to obviously drive very safely going down Mountain Trail and that's really the, the main concern. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. We will move on to a very special presentation, one that we enjoy every year, and it's when the Sierra Madre Rose Float Association presents to us the, the annual Rose Princesses. So I will hand it over to Dave.
Yes, my name's David Colcher, C.O.L.C.H.E.R., 1980 Lilliano Drive, representing the Rose Float Association. I am here as a member of the board at the moment and as president-elect, I will take over in, in January. This year, we are going to be presenting our 83rd float to the Rose Parade. We've been, entries in since 1917. This year's parade theme is Inspiring Stories and we had three different submissions coming forth with "I Think I Can" as representing The Little Engine That Could. We feel that our association is the little engine that does present and does come forth every year. We are the smallest city, we are the smallest association, we are the smallest budget, and we have won numerous prizes over the last, I think it's eight years, seven out of eight years. Our float is going to be roughly 50 feet long. It's going to be approximately 19 feet high and will articulate in various places so we can make it under the 210 bridge there and the stoplight and stoplights after that. We, our animation this year will include what is called theatrical fog coming out of the smokestack. We can't have smoke, per se, without fire department permission. The engine will be rising up on its rear wheels, making the effort to climb the hill. The cars will be rocking back and forth and all the wheels will be turning throughout the thing. This year, we also have a new first for us, which is this little floating island in the front of the, of the parade. So that's what brings us out to our 50-foot length. We have a contest, a, I hesitate calling it a contest, a call throughout the city for people to represent our float. This year, we had a number of young women and one young gentleman who had applied to be our princesses and ambassadors. We have an interview process, which we, to have three people who are not members of the Sierra Madre, they are from outside the city, interview all our candidates and come back with their choice as to who should represent our float. All the applicants have to be between the age of 15 and 18 and have a 3.0 average, at least a 3.0 average. I would also like to thank Attitude for supplying us with their outfits. And I would open, any questions if you have any? If not, I will turn it over to our princesses.
So David, who designed the float?
We had, I, we had, as I said, multiple submissions. The Branstaders, Garcia, and who was the third? I can't.
Lester?
I'm sorry, I am blanking on the, on the third, third name on that. The Branstaders also were the ones who did the rendering for us.
Great.
So...
Beautiful. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alexi Zait. I'm a senior at LaSalle High School where I'm involved in multiple clubs and leadership organizations. In my early high school years, I was shy and tended to stick with the activities that I was more familiar with, such as playing softball. Thank you. Then I decided to push myself outside my comfort zone. Then I decided to push myself outside my comfort zone and become more actively involved in my school community. And now I am on the leadership team for the Support Our Troops Club, which works to support servicemen and women and their families by providing holiday cards, care packages, and Thanksgiving meals. For the past two years, I have also served on the class council as a representative. I am a member of the National Honor Society, California Scholarship Federation, Habitat for Humanity Club, and Theater Tech. I also play softball on the varsity team and varsity golf. As a member of the Girl Scouts for the past 12 years, I have been involved in many projects in my community. I created a project for the Girl Scout Gold Award, which incorporated cellphone classes for senior citizens, and worked with the Sierra Madre Senior Center, and taught these seniors how to use different kinds of cellphones. To make this project sustainable, I left a cellphone reference booklet at the senior center that includes instructions for several types of phones. And a youth group in Sierra Madre is also continuing these classes by teaching more and expanding upon them in different technologies. This past spring, I earned my Girl Scout Gold Award due to this project, which is the highest award in Girl Scouting. I was also recently awarded the Sierra Madre Youth Service Award by the city. And I am fortunate enough to have lived in Sierra Madre for most of my life, for 17 years, with my mom, dad, and my younger brother, who is a freshman at LaSalle. We are a family who loves animals. We currently have three cats, two dogs, and two swimmer frogs. We are also temporarily taking care of my grandma's very hyper cocker spaniel. And my dad sometimes complains that we have too many animals, but he loves them anyway. In my future, I would like to pursue a career in filmmaking, preferably in screenwriting or producing. And in screenwriting classes I've taken in the past, I've had to delve into the psychology of characters, which has led me to an interest in psychology and possibly pursuing a career in that field. As I enter my young adult life, I'm still exploring the possibilities for my future. The experience I'm having as a Sierra Madre princess is one that I will never forget, and I look forward to riding on the float on New Year's Day, although I hear that we have to wake up very early in the morning. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a little shorter.
Hi, my name is Kayla Rice. I'm 18 years old. I have a 16-year-old brother, Adam, who is my best friend and my worst enemy. My family has lived in Sierra Madre for about 12 years, and even my dog Daisy appreciates their very dog-friendly town. I went to Sierra Madre Elementary and Middle School, but for high school, I chose to go to a school that few people have heard of, the Peace and Justice Academy in Pasadena. My school, now in its fifth year of existence, encourages us to be socially aware of the world around us. And instead of going to our regular classes on Friday, we learn about a community or global issue. We also have overnight labs, where we spend more than 24 hours exploring a particular topic. One year, we went to the Mexican border. That was one of the harder labs, and I still remember seeing children who are obviously less fortunate than us waving to us from the Mexican side of the fence. Every subject at my school has a unique perspective. For example, my physical education consists of four years of martial arts. My school helps fill my need to give back to the world, but my desire to do that began right here in Sierra Madre. When I was in second grade, I discovered my unique ability to understand and work with students with special needs. For six years, I assisted a teacher and a special ed teacher in our classroom, and I got to know firsthand the frustrations that these children face in the classroom and on the playground. While I was still in elementary school, I received the Kids with Heart Award from the Pasadena Unified School District for demonstrating caring and kindness. This award is only given to nine out of 18,000 students in Pasadena Unified each year. In middle school, I also received an award from the School District Special Education Department, an honor usually given only to teachers. And this past spring, I was named Powerful Voice winner by YES Magazine, which focuses on positive solutions for changing the world. An essay I wrote was published in their magazine, which is read by people around the world and sent to more than 28,000 teachers. Now as an 11th grader, people are starting to ask what I want to study in college, and for the first time, I have to give them a serious answer. And my goal is to get my doctorate in psychology, but whatever I do, I know it'll involve helping others. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I know, very impressed by everyone so far.
Hi, everyone. My name is Brittany Stone, and I'm currently a senior at San Marino High School. I was born and raised in Sierra Madre and have three older siblings named Megan, Devin, and Dominic, who also attended San Marino as well. Looking back at my three years of high school, I'm so happy I got involved in this school like I did. Starting out as a freshman was a little nerve-wracking for me. I was brandy to the school and didn't know anyone there. As soon as I could, I signed up for the freshman girls volleyball team and the cheer squad. Besides just wanting to be part of sports, I also joined a club at my school that helps and supports special needs kids, which made me attend events with them. I also joined a club at my school that supports our troops. We would send and help make care packages for the holiday season. I also donated my time to food drives during the Thanksgiving season and toy drives for the needed families during the Christmas holiday. Being the very involved freshman that I was, I also joined the dance team at my school. Dance is something I truly love to do, and I've been taking dance classes since I was four years old. During my sophomore year, I stayed involved with dance, but also wanted to join something new. Later, I joined the cross-country team. As a member of a very good team, we were fortunate and qualified to go to state, which I think is something a lot of schools dream of attending. Joining the team made me push myself physically, and this was a perfect match for me. Being the youngest in my family gave me a lot of advantages. My older siblings were all role models to me and always made me think of what I wanted to become and what I wanted to be like. Having older siblings gave me someone in addition to my parents to go to during difficult times. After graduation, I hope to attend UCLA, taking classes and growing my interest toward pursuing interior design. Being able to attend this school will give me a chance to learn more about the major and, and I don't know exactly what I want to become, I just know for sure I don't want to be a doctor or a nurse. Being born and raised in Sierra Madre gave me so many great experiences. When I was younger, I joined the Sierra Madre Girls softball team, took dance classes, and went to the annual Fourth of July parade, for as long as I can remember. Participating in local events has been such a great experience, and being selected as a princess to represent my community is such an amazing honor, and I'm so thankful and blessed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Christine Keon. I am 16 years old, and I'm a junior at St. Lucy's Priory High School in Glendora. I am part of many organizations at my school, including the Social Issues Club, the National Honor Society, the California Scholarship Federation, and the swim team. I plan on bringing back the film club that ended with the graduation of its founders last spring. I listen to almost every type of music genre, and I read almost every type of literary genre. In my free time, I love to write stories, poems, and song lyrics. It is extremely relaxing, and the feeling of writing a good piece is indescribable. When it comes to what I want to do in the future, I am still very unsure. I know that I would want to attend a college in Ohio, Arizona, or California. I would like to major in mathematics, finance management, or computer science. Beyond college, I'm even more clueless about what I want to do, but I know that I have time, and as I get closer to the, to the decision deadline, I will make up my mind. I am one of four kids. My older sister is a fourth-grade teacher at a Catholic elementary school. My brother is a customer service worker at a tech company. My little sister is in the eighth grade at St. Rita's. My little sister is also in the St. Rita's Adult Choir, and my dad is a Eucharistic minister and altar server there. My siblings and I all graduated from St. Rita's. I chose to go to St. Lucy's because I wanted to do something different than the rest of my classmates, and St. Lucy's felt like home. It is an amazing school, and I am so pleased I chose to go there. I have lived in the same house in Sierra Madre my entire life. My mom's business is here in town, and I feel very connected to this town. Earlier this year, I had my two friends from the Chino area come over to my house, and I immediately took them over to Kirsten Court, showing them all of the shops and businesses around. I felt entirely proud and happy to call this town my home. I hope that later in life, I either stay in Sierra Madre or find a similar town wherever I end up, because it is home. I love this town. I am extremely excited to be on the Sierra Madre Rose Float this year. I have always watched the parade on television, and to be in the parade this year is an incredible thing. My family and friends are also very excited for me as well. My friends are willing to get up at an early hour for them to watch the Rose Parade this year. When my aunt found out, she immediately bought tickets, but I am sure that I am even more excited than them about this. I cannot wait for this unforgettable experience, and I'm completely grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you must admit, we have some incredible princesses this year.
Absolutely. Very impressive.
I would also like to put a call out for volunteers. We need volunteers to help decorate the float and with all the dry goods and flowers we plan to put on here. We have over 20,000 roses, 5,000 carnations planned on this, and we need help. We will be there at, at the Rose Barn every Saturday and Sunday, Saturday starting at 9:00 and Sunday starting at 10:00 in, 10:00 in the morning till whenever. Also, I'd like to just point out that we will be displaying the float on the 31st at Kirsten Court at about 5:00 PM, depending on traffic and when we can pull out. And we plan on coming back and spending the evening and the following day on the third in the evening and on the fourth, so Sunday all day until 5:00. And we will be, at that time, selling any flowers that are left over from the decorating and anything that's on the float that anybody wants to purchase. So thank you, and I appreciate your help as well.
Thank you. Remind people where they can send donations.
Donations, what's our P.O. box? P.O. box 603. It's at Sierra Madre Post Office 91025. And you can find out the information on volunteering at our website, which is smrosefloat.org.
Thank you. Thank you, David. And to the princesses, I think that I speak for everyone here, that extremely impressive, every one of you, and well-spoken. And I guarantee you, what you just did right there, get up, you know, getting up in front of a crowd like this, and speaking so eloquently, is, is going to be harder than on the day of the parade where you get to sit there and ride on the float. So you are indeed, you know, amazing representatives and ambassadors for the city, and thank you very much. And you'll probably look back on this when you're, you know, old and gray, and it'll probably be one of, honestly, the best things that you ever did. So enjoy it and have fun, so.
And Mayor, just considering our day and age and social media, can we take a picture with our princesses?
I don't know if they want to take pictures with old people like us, you know? Yeah, let's take a picture. Yeah, that'd be great.
You're going to recruit someone?
Yes. You guys are definitely the best.
I'm sure it's happening.
We're missing one.
Sure.
I'll just leave, um...
Jean is, Jean can sing.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. This is probably better.
Good?
I say we absolutely will just lost Jean in our picture.
Sorry about that.
Jean, time. There you go.
And we hope to see as many of you as possible volunteering at the barn.
Of course, we'll do.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You're doing the grill.
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much. I'll be on the grill two days, at least, and, and I'll see you there, Barbie. I'll be on the grill as well. Yeah.
And I'm working the sails.
Good.
And we always appreciate all the help we give.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Director Inman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. It's time for my monthly update on the water supply. Very pleased, of course, that we had some rain last week, and looks like we have more coming this week. So we're, we're looking a lot better than we were, but we still have a drought going on, and we still have to, to be very careful about how we're using our water. For November, our conservation rate was about 12.3%. The total over 2012-13 was almost 25%, and we saved 7.5 million gallons in November. You recall, at the, the last update, I provided you some information regarding gallons per capita daily that the state is now reporting. That number was 203 in September and dropped all the way down to 163 in, actually, I'm sorry, that's October, not November. So, but still, that's a tremendous improvement. For this month, we're 22.5% almost. Over the same period last year, we've saved over 2.5 million gallons this month already. Our number for gallons per capita daily is all the way down to 104 for this month so far. So we're really showing an improvement, and I thought I'd show you here what we've got, comparing ourselves to other cities in the area. You can see almost everyone has improved, and I think we can chalk a lot of that up to the fact that the weather's cooler and that we've had some rain. And I wanted to note the, the line at the bottom there. In August of 2012, our number was over 300. So we have made a great deal of progress since August of 2012. In terms of our aquifer status, you can see that between November 12th and December 5th, the, the elevations of the water surface have continued to rise, and we expect that they will continue to do so, probably at a more rapid pace now that we've started getting some rain. But it's, it's a period of weeks or, or even months before the water that we receive and put into the spreading basins actually makes it down to the aquifer. And I was notified this afternoon that the county will be sending us water from Santa Anita Dam beginning tomorrow in preparation for receiving more water in the coming storm. And speaking of rainfall, the numbers pretty well speak for themselves. The average rainfall for Sierra Madre is 25 inches. We've been well below that, and year-to-date, we've, we've got a long way to go to get just up to average precipitation. And with that, I do need to note that we are continuing our system flushing, although at a decreased rate. Flushing will always be part of our operation. It's required by the State Health Department that we do so. We flushed since, before we started importing water, and we will continue to do so. We're flushing per standards published by American Water Works Association and Dr. Baraboe, but I'm pleased to note that the majority of our flushing actions now incorporate the water truck, where we use the water either for watering in parks or taking the water back and, and discharging it to the spreading basins. And I'm also pleased to note that our operators have found that in each one of our flushing sites, each one of the hydrants that's operated, that we know... sites, each one of the hydrants that's operated, that we no longer have rusty colored water coming out, that the water is now in fact clear from those locations. So, the majority of our residents should now be seeing clear water in most cases and we look for that to continue improving. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Director Inman, did we start capturing the water into the spreading basins right away at the Camillo divertor?
We've been capturing all the water that we can get out of the Grandview Dip and anywhere else we can find it.
Have we been following up with the people who originally complained about the rusty water? Have we gone back to those homes and kind of checked in, followed up, make sure that...
We, no, we have not done a house-to-house follow-up on that.
Are we going to? As we're doing the new treatment, just to see? Well, you don't have to go to every house, but just to...
We could conceivably do that. We're rather short of staff to be able to go back to that many, many places, but to those that we have records of, we could be going back to.
Just a phone call? Maybe a phone call, just to see?
Thank you.
Are we getting any complaints about colored water now?
I haven't received any complaints in quite some time.
It's been a while then.
It has been quite a while.
So, no news is probably pretty good news.
Well, hopefully that's the case. Hopefully, it's not just a case of people being tired or complaining.
Right.
But I think it's because the water quality has improved.
Great. Anything? No questions? Thank you, Director Inman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will move on to our consent calendar.
Mayor, members of the City Council, there are only two consent calendar items this evening. The first one, item A, is the adoption of Resolution 1490 approving our demands. At 1B is the declaration of city-owned equipment and vehicles to be surplus and the recommendation is that the council authorize us to work with an auction house to have the surplus vehicles and equipment auctioned off and out of our inventory. That concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions on the warrants or there might be some questions on 1B and the surplus? I was going to say, the last time, it's, I'll ask more, you know, I have a couple on the surplus. It's just the cement truck, is that a mileage issue or, because it's obviously not an age issue, 1968.
It is an age issue.
Is it an age issue?
It's both.
I figured that these things just last forever if we've used it since 1968, but...
Director Inman can give you some details. It's a little, it's ancient.
Yeah? Yeah, it seems ancient. Well, that's the thing, I figured that, you know, this thing runs forever if we've been using it this long.
But it doesn't have that many miles on it for that, you know?
We've had that since before I graduated from high school. It's probably seen better days, but frankly, it's a piece of equipment we don't use any longer. It was a dump truck that we modified to take the dump bed off and put a cement mixer on the back and we've, after several years of use of that truck in that manner, we now just, we've got a cement mixer on a trailer that's much easier to work with and to drag around town. So, it's simply a piece of equipment that we don't use any longer.
Got it. Any other questions? All right. We'll open this up for public comment. And seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any other comments before we approve the warrants and the surplus? All right. Motion?
Move to review the consent calendar.
I was in favor. Aye. And that is unanimous. We'll move on to item number two, review of the general plan update, recreation services, community cultural and special events, transit, library services, land use map. Madam, our interim director.
It would probably be recommended that the council proceed similarly to how you tackled this the last time. We should start probably with the chapters and the narratives and once we get through that, when we deal with the maps, which are towards the end of the agenda packet, we do have versions that we can put up on the screen so that interim director Cordoso can go through the recommended changes in detail with the council. The way you proceeded last time was you just started on the first page of the narrative and we worked our way through.
Okay. Is there a presentation or do you want us just to jump in?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We will have a presentation later when we get to the land use map. Just to let you know, for the sections that you are reviewing with the implementation, we do have staff here tonight, Director of Library Services and also Recreation Services Manager, Adam Matsumoto. They're here to answer any questions you might have. And also, when we move on to the R.M., R.H. discussion, John Hutt is here tonight to basically explain that those recommendations that were made and that were incorporated into those sections for you. So, just letting you know that. So, if you'd like to start the review...
Great.
Just let me know if you have any questions.
Any questions for Director?
Right now?
All right. Well, the first time we went through the land use section, we actually did turn page by page. The last time though, when we went through the subsequent chapters, we really just spot checked and, you know, if someone had an issue, they would point us to that, to that page. So, let's start with Section 2 Recreation Services and I think we'll use the same approach. You know, did anyone have any edits or comments to anything? And if so, you can...
I have one question. On page, page 12. See, just a comment about that's stricken is maintain the Jones Peak Trail connection providing access from Bailey Canyon to Mount Wilson Trail. Why was that struck?
Assistant City Manager Cox says that.
This is a liability issue. All of the city's trails are unmaintained trails and by doing that, we greatly reduce our liability if anybody gets hurt on one of the trails. If we have a maintained trail, then we actually become liable if somebody gets hurt, if they fall off the cliff, heaven forbid. So, for liability purposes, we've worked really hard to separate ourselves from any kind of maintenance that's done on any of our trails.
Okay. Makes sense.
I'm glad to see that we have the Hart House Storage Room finally resolved, but my comment was on C 10.1 since we had the public comment about the skateboard park. I thought we could add it in there, just exploring the possibility of it.
I was going to bring that up myself, too. It's noticeably absent. I think there's quite a bit of interest in town for it.
Okay. Do we want to discuss that? Is there any objection?
Just a comment about it. I mean, that was looked at one time and never acted on. I mean, that was a big, big discussion. What was that, about 15 years ago, 10, 15?
Before all of our time.
Well, let's bring it back.
Okay.
At least explore the possibility.
We have the Duty Man House demolition, which could be a potential location.
Besides, those guys did a great job.
Those guys did do a good job. Okay.
So, just insert...
Just insert it there?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else in this chapter?
I don't have anything else.
Want to do public comment on it, chapter by chapter?
I think we can. I think we'll do public comment on the whole, all of these chapters at once. I would venture to say that to the extent anyone has any question, unless someone wants to run up and... Yeah. We can move on to library services, then I'll open up for public comment.
Community and cultural.
Excuse me, community, culture and special events.
The implementation plan was fine?
Yeah, looked fine to me.
Okay.
Okay, on, I have a comment on page 24. Says, under the Mount Wilson Trail Race, "The trail is limited to a maximum of 300 runners." Is that a factual statement?
Currently, it is.
We bumped that up, so it should reflect, we can make a notation that it's 350.
Why even put a number in there?
You don't have to.
I would propose to strike it.
I would, yeah. Strike it, please.
We'll leave in that it takes place on a Saturday in May and just, we'll make it a correct sentence, but we'll leave that part of the sentence in.
Okay, also on page 26, we didn't have an Oktoberfest Golf and Tennis Tournament this year. Do we want to say that that...
Page, page, which page?
That's page 26.
You know, I think it was just capturing special events over the past years. I don't know. I don't think it hurts to keep it in there. I don't know if it mandates us to keep that.
Yeah, sets expectations or anything. Okay, I'm okay with it.
You could always do a volunteer committee, has sponsored, if you want to.
Has tents.
Yeah. I'm fine either way.
I have a comment. Are you done? On page 25, the Fourth of July Committee meets yearly. Is that correct? They only meet once a year?
I guess by meets yearly mean they pretty much meet all year long is what we were trying to convey.
Okay.
Probably could be worded to convey that better.
So, the committee meets throughout the year?
And the Beer Garden was struck.
Why?
Yeah, that is...
Liability?
No, I don't know, but it's the best part.
I don't know why that was struck.
Why is that struck out?
Because it's repeated. Oh, I remember that being a discussion item.
There you go. I was getting nervous.
It's so exciting. It's in there twice.
Beautiful. All right.
Page 26 on number two, I just think we should refer to other means of communication that we have. It's not just through the website, but I don't know, capturing it somehow to say, a well-maintained city website and other means of communication.
Yeah, that does seem a little incomplete, doesn't it?
It just seems like the website's the only way we're communicating out with city programs and services.
And we do the email blast now. I don't think when this was first written, we did that.
We have newsletters, there's quite a few things we do, press releases.
Social media.
Facebook, that's why, social media.
All right. Anything else? And the implementation program? Looks good. Okay. We'll go on to Transit Services. Section 5.
One thing in the implementation, Sarah, in the text.
I just had a question about C 29.2 on page 32 with making the mayor posted parking lot more accessible. What is that? What was the intent of that?
There have been various discussions over the years about whether, you know, we all know where that parking lot is, but visitors coming into town, if you drive in on Sierra Madre Boulevard, you come straight up Baldwin and turn out, you really don't know that the parking lot's behind the buildings. So, as a way of making it, whether it's signage, whether it's more openings through to the parking lot, but just somehow particularly visitors, I've talked to people who've lived here a while and don't realize that's behind there. Because it's kind of hidden, you don't see it from the boulevard, you don't see it as you're driving up Baldwin. So, that was the intent.
So, it's raising awareness that it exists, not necessarily make it more accessible? I, it just sounded confusing to me.
Well, there's actually some talk of maybe even putting more pedestrian paths, drive-throughs, pedestrian paths where they could be created so you don't have these big gaps right where you can, you can get from the parking lot to the boulevard.
I think 29.1 addresses the signage and finding it, but 29.2, I do think was to address trying to make it easier.
Barbara Lee?
Just a quick question. With the pedestrian pass, would that take away from any parking spaces that we have then?
There is no plan yet. This is talking about coming back with a plan to figure out how to do it. I don't know.
Oh, all right. Ms. Hutt, did you have a comment?
Well, I think you all covered it. I mean, the main issue is, the great thing about that parking lot is it's hidden. So, which is unlike, you know, giant shopping centers where you see a huge field of parking in front. The problem is if people, visitors come to town, they don't know where it is. And the other thing is, some people think that if you park there, you have to sort of like walk all the way around. And so, the idea is to punch openings through or, you know, if you live in town, just cut through the liquor store. But a lot of people don't feel comfortable doing that. So, you know, the idea is to make, you know, you've seen things where maybe you paint footsteps or something that let people know. The idea on access is about pedestrian access from the parking lot to the boulevard. It's not more driveways or anything like that.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on then to...
Oh, I have a question on C 30.5. I don't understand, "Educate citizens on traffic control to enlist voluntary compliance of traffic laws." So, is that just more traffic awareness, laws awareness? It was added by the Planning Commission. I just didn't know what it really meant.
Denise, did you say C 30?
C 30.5.
30.5, thank you.
At the bottom of page 32.
Okay. What the Planning Commission's intent was on that one?
Yeah, I think the intent is really to educate citizens. It's not so much on traffic control. I think it really is traffic laws really is what it is. Yeah, I think this is not worded correctly.
Traffic laws.
Mm-hmm.
Well...
To enlist voluntary compliance and then just, just strike out the rest because then it's repeated.
Thank you.
Is that really needed?
Well, it's part of the improvement of traffic study would be, of the improvement of traffic safety, one of the things would be to educate people.
How fast to drive?
How fast they're driving.
U-turns.
U-turns.
Or slowing down at crosswalks.
Yes, slowing down.
I mean, the people coming through town or people...
This could be as simple as, you know, an occasional press release that goes out that, remember, we do, you know, schools starting, so there's more children on the streets, crossing at the crosswalks, you know, school's back in session, be aware of kids. It's those kinds of messages that, it's that type of education program.
Just a comment, just yesterday, driving north on Baldwin, right in the downtown area, an impatient person crossed that double yellow line and passed me because I was not going as fast as he would have liked. I was going to follow him home just...
Did you get his license number?
I didn't.
What was the make and model of the car?
Wasn't as nice as my car.
There you go. I have a question. On the C 26.4, the continue to provide the free fixed services for the community. I don't know why, remind me exactly, I thought it cost a dollar. I thought it cost 50 cents. My blanking on that, is that, am I making this up?
Manager Matsumoto?
Originally, it did have a cost to ride the fixed route transit. When we did the modification to the route, the time, as well as the dollar ride modifications, the cost for the fixed route was eliminated. So, it's a free route now.
Great. And then we eliminated the coordinate discounted transit service for seniors, handicapped individuals and low-income residents because of...
Because it's entirely free for, for any usage. So, it encompasses all those, all those demographics for the, for the...
Right. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at 26.5, the next bullet.
Oh.
Which, you know, have we, have we as a city not, I guess, why did we eliminate the goal or the objective? I guess it'd be the goal to continue to look for discounted transit services for those in need.
We struck that because we specifically don't provide those services. Those services are provided by other agencies. Metro is one of those agencies, access services. So, it's not a specific service that the city provides, but it's a regional-based application of that service.
But I think that's what this means, is that the city will kind of help coordinate that or get the information out or collect that information, that they're running it, running it. It's just that they're going to help kind of coordinate it and when they hear things...
I was going to follow him home just. I didn't.
What was the make and model of the car?
Wasn't as nice as my car.
There you go. I have a question. On the C twenty-six point four, the continue to provide the free fixed services for the community. I don't know why, remind me exactly, I thought it cost a dollar. I thought it cost fifty cents. My, my blanking on that, is that, am I making this up?
Manager Matsumoto?
Originally, it did have a cost to ride the fixed route transit. When we did the modification to the route, the time, as well as the dollar ride modifications, the cost for the fixed route was eliminated. So it's a free route now.
Great. And then we eliminated the coordinate discounted transit service for seniors, handicapped individuals, and low-income residents because of?
Because it's entirely free for, for any usage. So it encompasses all those, all those demographics for the, for the per use.
Right. Oh, sorry, I'm looking at twenty-six point five, the next bullet.
Oh.
Which, you know, have we, have we as a city not, I guess, why did we eliminate the, the goal or the objective? I guess it'd be the goal to continue to look for discounted transit services for those in need.
We, we struck that because we specifically don't provide those services. Those services are provided by other agencies. Metro is one of those agencies, Access Services. So it's not a specific service that the city provides, but it's a regional base application of that service.
But I think that's what this means, is that the city will kind of help coordinate that or get the information out or collect that information, that they're running the, running it. It's just that they're going to help kind of coordinate it and when they hear things that come along.
Make the, make that information accessible to those, those populations. We can adjust that.
You'd say provide information regarding?
I just think you would just want to continue to coordinate discounted transit services for seniors, handicapped individuals.
Yeah, I would just put that in.
Yeah, but just continue to.
I mean, point taken on, you know, these aren't, the transit services, we aren't providing as a city, but I do think the, the coordination part is key. Makes sense. Okay.
Well, you're leaving in twenty-six, five, and six.
Uh, we are leaving in?
Twenty-six point five.
Twenty-six point five.
What about twenty-six point six? Leave that?
No.
We don't want people out in the evenings, are we, Senator?
And then just, just a question, is thirty, C thirty point six, just wondering why it has a leaf there for the sustainability?
Bikes.
Bicycles.
That's, means it's green.
More people will use bicycles and that's.
Bicycle safety and traffic courses?
Then more people would ride bicycles.
Yeah, promotes bicycle.
Promote bicycle use. So they're out of their cars, they're on a bicycle.
Sounds like a stretch, but okay.
But if they were given as points, we want all the points that we can get.
More leaves.
More leaves.
I can make that work.
Great. Library services or anything else in the transit?
Just one comment on the implementation plan. IM eleven says the city will provide biannual traffic control. Biannual is vague. What is it, twice a year?
It actually means two different, it actually means two different things. So we need to clarify, yeah.
Which page is that?
Biannual.
That's page four of the implementation plan.
Page four.
So what is it? What's the intent? Twice a year?
I know that the intent of the committee, when it's biannual, was every other year.
Every other year.
Okay, better yet.
Wow. Good. You thought twice a year was too much for the traffic?
Yes.
Okay, every other year.
Every other year.
Okay, good. All right.
All right, library services. And we do have the Director of Library Services here.
There is a slight revision because of the information technology. If somebody could remind me where that is, where we need to revise.
Spot.
Page fifteen. Paragraph two. Says eighty-eight percent of all funds comes from general, eleven percent. Remaining twelve percent are budgeted from Internal Services Fund. We need to, we work that section because although if this is explaining what we currently do or have done in the past, it's correct. Going forward, we're going to be budgeting differently.
Well, no.
So it's at the council's discretion how you'd like it to be.
This is the overview of existing conditions. So we always knew going forward that things would, these types of things would be changed. So you want to make sure you capture exactly what we have right now.
Is how we used to do it, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm being bossy there. If you guys want to do it differently, that's fine.
Okay.
On page fourteen, where it says the Library Services Department is administered by a five-member board, appointed by the mayor and approved by the City Council, technically, that's, you know, not right, right? I mean, the?
Technically, that's the way our ordinance is writ, our resolution is written.
But I thought it was the mayor, the mayor appoints the board members. But what does it mean and then approved by the, because we don't vote after, we vote individually and then the mayor appoints the person, so.
You don't have to take our suggestions into consideration.
Well, that's the thing. So and approved by the City Council. The City Council doesn't need to approve it.
Yes, the City Council does need to approve it.
Okay, I guess.
It is, it is the way our resolution is written. We could say the mayor makes a recommendation, if you feel better with that, and then the council approves it.
As long as we're, that, you know, the ordinance is written a little funky, so maybe that is how.
Resolution is, yeah, a little interesting.
Okay.
Are you still on page sixteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Down at the bottom of that second paragraph, it does talk about the library staff is responsible for maintaining the city's website.
It's similar to what we had said earlier. This explains current conditions and that is how we've always done it. Going forward, we're changing it.
Or if this changes before it goes up to, comes back for final adoption, then we change it. And I just always want to verify that the folks at the library had a chance to, to look at the changes from the Planning Commission before.
Yes.
Okay, and they were okay with all the changes?
Correct.
Any changes?
Nope.
No? Okay. We'll move on to the, let me open up for public comment right now on those chapters before we move on to the land use designation map. Any comments or questions on the chapters we just reviewed? I think we're fine to move on then. Oh, you want, you want a little break? Yeah, take a little break. Yeah, thank you very much. We'll be back in five minutes, eight o'clock.
And we're back. Back to the agenda item number two. And right now, we're considering our land use designation map. And I think there is going to be a presentation on this, so.
You have your pointer?
I do. Okay, I will review the maps with you and explain what the changes are recommended, what originally the General Plan Steering Committee recommended, and what the Planning Commission recommended. And if you have any questions, please feel free to stop me at any point, and I'll answer them for you. Starting at the top here, generally, this area is currently designated in the existing land use map, the 1996 land use map, as hillside. And the committee recommended that it be re-designated as natural open space. The Planning Commission agree, as you can see, there are no changes. Basically, what generally what this means, anything that is in red, noted in red, and basically outlined in red, are recommendations by the General Plan Steering Committee. If it's not crossed off and with black or dark blue font or color, it means that the Planning Commission agreed with the recommendation of the General Plan Steering Committee. On this map here, you will see originally RL being re-designated hillside, same thing over here and also here. This area here is being recommended for designation from residential, RL being residential low density to municipal, as there are county flood control facilities in this area. Here is the same situation as well. And down below, this is Bailey Park, so we would go from hillside to constructed open space. The only change, the two changes made by Planning Commission were these two properties here, they agreed that they had have characteristics that are hillside characteristics, so that they should also be re-designated to hillside as these properties are being recommended. So in this instance here, it's a very, very small piece of property right here, the recommendation is that it's non-municipal, that it is actually a natural open space. There is a recorded easement over this parcel. It is privately owned, it's actually not municipal, it's not publicly owned, it's privately owned, however, there is an easement on over that property to prohibit development from occurring in the future. So the commission agreed that this should be, this small area here should actually be, should go from RL to natural open space, to basically implement that easement. Do you have any questions so far on this one?
I do. Where's, can you point out where the debris basin is? I'm trying to get a sense of, you know, what properties we're talking about.
In, James, you might want to correct.
Yeah, the Auburn debris basin.
It's in this area, is that correct?
So is that?
Right at that juncture.
It's this area, is that right?
Right there is the debris basin.
So the RL to municipal, we don't own that land, though, do we?
We don't, but it's publicly owned, so municipal would capture that. It doesn't necessarily mean that it is city property, but it is a municipal use.
Okay. It's county-owned?
It's county-owned, it's flood control.
And so that natural open space, I'm just trying to visualize, is there?
Well, this is not part of that. This small little piece here is actually privately owned.
Got it.
By the same property owner that owns this adjacent piece here.
Okay. And on the northern piece where the Planning Commission wants it to go to hillside, can you, can you just explain a little bit, I guess, the thought process behind that? You said it had some hillside features?
I can actually show you an aerial view of the properties, so that you can, okay. It's these two properties right here. There is an access from the cul-de-sac that is here, and you just, you drive up, as you can see here, and it is extremely steep here. It's a very, very steep driveway that leads to both of these. And as you can see, the surrounding area, it's all very similar, and it has the topography that the adjacent properties also have. So it lends itself to the same type of development standards that are applicable to the adjacent properties in a hillside setting. This area down below is a little, just a little flatter areas that are more appropriate for R1 standards, RL residential low density. So that was basically the thought process behind.
That's helpful. We have any questions on that quadrant?
Oh, just, yeah, one question. For the designations that are moving to nat- natural open space, are those already in a conservancy?
Yes.
All that is?
That is correct.
Okay, good.
Is there a reason why Ailey Canyon would be constructed open space?
Because there are park facilities there.
If there's facilities there, then it's constructed.
Right, the natural open space really is just undeveloped, a natural, you know, it's in their natural state, whereas the constructed is more park, park facilities. That's the basic difference between those two.
Great.
Okay. So the next quadrant is the area of the city to the northeast. So again, up in the area, the northerly area is also being recommended to be changed from H to natural open space, hillside to natural open space. Here, this is basically the One Carter, a piece of the One Carter development going from RL to H hillside. As you know, the zoning currently is hillside, so this would make it consistent with the zoning, including this piece as well here, as you can see. Let's see. There is an area up here that the General Plan Steering Committee recommended, several lots here along Yucca Trail, Yucca Trail is in this area here bisects these properties. The General Plan Steering Committee recommended for a change from RC, which is Canyon, to natural open space, and the Planning Commission actually widened that area to now encompass other adjacent properties that are also owned, basically owned by the city, that are not, you know, going to be developed, they're really basically natural open space that would remain in the same state. So they went ahead and included these properties in that change as well. Here, there's a small municipal residential, low density to municipal as well as it is, it's either city or county, I believe it's city-owned. Again, hillside to natural open space. These properties here would go from low-density residential to hillside, again, as they have characteristics of hillside setting, a hillside setting. In this area here, the recommendation by the Steering Committee was that these properties, they're south of the canyon, and they are more characteristic of R1 properties. The Planning Commission also included this area here as, from canyon to RL. They agree that this should also be included in that area.
Now, that east-west street, that's Cannon, is that North Cannon, which street is that?
This, this street here is, you mean?
Yeah, where you are, right there.
This one is Sturdivan.
That's Sturdivan, excuse me, Sturdivan.
Sturdivan, yeah.
So, so what is the change, if you change that from residential canyon to residential low density, I mean, what's the, what's the impact, yeah, what's the difference?
Well, it really, I mean, the difference is that the R1 standards would apply versus canyon. It really is, they're both single-family residential, they both allow the same, you know, the same type of development. Some of the standards may be a little different, but I think that they felt that the properties were not so much characteristic of canyon, they were a little bit larger lots, in a kind of, maybe a little flatter area, that just seemed like they were more similar to R1 than RC types of properties.
And all the properties north of the triangle there that were changed from RC to RL, what, yeah, what?
This, this is canyon, so this.
All residential canyon?
All residential canyon. As part of that, I would like to point out.
I have a question, too, send if you finish what you're on.
Yeah, I would like to point out, it's not shown here, and it should have been, I apologize, but I will let you know that this property here, I know it's a little small.
That's what I'm.
It's 476 Sturdivan, there are several cottages here that are part of this property. It is zoned hillside management zone, but the land use map shows it as canyon. The General Plan Steering Committee, even though it's not shown here, they recommended that this be, the land use designation in the land use map be changed to hillside to match the zoning. When the Planning Commission considered this, the property owners attended the meeting, and they basically asked the commission to do the opposite, to allow this to remain in the general plan land use map as canyon, and then have the zoning match that. And their, basically, their justification was that this property is within the canyon, it cannot be subdivided. And I think that the, when this was zoned, rezoned hillside, what we presume is that it was done so because it appears to be a large property in the canyon that might lend itself to subdivision. However, this property is actually, it doesn't, it doesn't have hillside characteristics, and there are actually nine lots that make up this property, it's not one lot, there are actually nine lots, and they have cottages on them that have been there for decades. And the, the reality is that the RC zone has a minimum requirement of 15,000 square foot for new lots. The total size of this property is about 27,000 square feet, so it could not be subdivided into even two lots, it would be too small as a whole to be subdivided. And they, so they requested that it actually remains as canyon, as it is more similar to canyon characteristics than really hillside. The Planning Commission agreed with them and agreed that it should remain designation of RC, and that the zoning would then later on match the RC designation. Just wanted to point that out to you, that's another one that's not outlined, and it should have been, but that's the, that's the reasoning behind that.
Did you, did you explain why, on this other property, or the other zoning designation, Planning Commission wants to go from RC to RL, but evidently the committee didn't?
No, the committee actually recommended that this be, this area here be RC to RL.
You have blue writing above.
And I believe that.
Isn't that commissioned?
Yeah, the, the commission actually, let's see. They added that piece, exactly, they felt that it should actually go further up than, than what the committee, I believe the committee actually stopped here, and.
I'm just kind of wondering why the committee stopped.
Yeah. Perhaps Councilmember Delmar recalls that, I'm not.
You know what, I have no idea, really. We do have some other committee members, maybe Mr. Hut remembers why we stopped, I don't know. I have to tell you, this, this was a very hard project for us, because we realized that we had inconsistencies, and we actually had to look at three different maps, you know, to come up with this, so.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No, it's, I mean, really, I should know, but I really don't know.
And if you can see by the size of the lots, you could see why that'd be a natural breaking point, I mean, they get really small, and you are further up in the canyon, but.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
I guess, yeah, what's the?
Here comes someone smart from our committee.
I think one thing on all of these interactions, on these parts, is this, there's sort of these fingers of different zoning that go in, and so part of the thing is, you want to get the best possible designation for the property, but you don't want to do it to such a degree that you've got like, you know, sort of, one zone here, one zone here, one zone here, and so you sort of say, okay, well, where do you find the breaking points that you do that? And it's sort of hard to tell, because the canyon and, and, single-family are pretty similar in color, and then the hillside's just a different shade, so it's, it's hard to tell. But I think the idea was, we're trying to balance, you know, getting the best zoning, but trying to do it so that you have decent-sized blocks, and it didn't look totally higi-pidgey. I think as far as that, that one section, whether it's RL or RC, it's, it's not that big of a deal. You don't have a situation there where you have properties that are undeveloped or likely to be subdivided. The, the big difference in RC versus RL is canyon sort of deals with smaller lots better, it has varying setback rules, it also allows for uncovered parking. RL is going to be better on sort of standard-sized lots. RL will allow bigger houses, but they're going to require bigger setbacks and covered parking. Hillside is, you know, has got, as you know, a lot of provisions that deal with sloped land and whatnot. It also is the most restrictive when it comes to subdivision. But as Latisha was saying, if you've got something that's less than 30,000 square feet, that's, really doesn't matter anyhow. So canyon, hillside would, either one would be fine, and I think that chunk, I don't really think that anyone from the committee would have a, have a opposition to it being either way.
Was there public comment on that? Do you recall during planning?
You know, the map, there wasn't a whole bunch of public comment, and part of the reason is, is you see tonight, it's, it's difficult to deal with these maps, and so we didn't have, I think, the benefit of the overhead, and we sort of broke down into subgroups and laid out big maps, and to the extent it was public comment, it wasn't anything that were, someone spoke at a microphone. But we tried to take into account various property owners' thought, but there wasn't a whole bunch of property owners that came to our meetings either. So to the extent that the Planning Commission had the benefit of property owner input, you know, that's something that we didn't really have as much.
Thank you, that was helpful.
Interim Director, I do have a question, just a general question about, I do understand that there are inconsistencies between the zoning maps and then these maps, and what is the long-range plan, is how to align them together? Because I think you even noted earlier that there's an intent to change something in zoning map at some point, so timeline-wise, what does that look like?
Well, what will happen is, once the general plan update is adopted, the updated document is adopted by City Council, with it, the land use map will also be adopted. The land use map will drive any changes to the zoning map that, that are required here to address inconsistencies. So the zoning map will follow, changes to that map will follow whatever is adopted here.
Okay.
So whatever direction you go, we'll follow with the zoning map to make it consistent.
And then timeline-wise, what, what would you guess, once this is approved, when the zoning map would be changed and modified?
It could be, the first, you know, the first thing we do is to follow up, and it should be done probably soon thereafter, because this obviously has, you know, practical consequences on a daily basis as to what is allowed on property, so this is probably something that should follow immediately thereafter.
Good, thank you.
Can we move to the next one? Okay. Okay, this one, we'll start with the area along West Sierra Madre Boulevard. I apologize, it's, there's a lot of information here, and it can be very confusing, but basically, one of the things that was, one of the main changes that was recommended by the General Plan Steering Committee on the land use map was the creation of, well, actually not so much creation, but it was a change from our E land use designation, which corresponded to an actual zoning designation, a change from that to actually just an overlay instead of an actual zoning designation. So what happened, what happened here was that these properties here along Sierra Madre Boulevard are currently designated in the land use map as RE, residential entrepreneur, and the zoning designation is RP, which is residential professional. What was recommended was that there is, that there be no longer an actual designation in the land use map, but it's now an overlay that is residential entrepreneur, which then maintains an underlying zone, in this case would, would be RH, residential high-density, with an overlay of residential entrepreneur, which allows those additional uses that are currently allowed under the residential professional zone. So that way, you have more flexibility, your standards are still, are age standards for high-density, for multifamily, but it's now just an overlay that can be applied, so that if you, if you, if a property owner is interested in having those uses on those properties, they can still do so. The zoning requirements are for the underlying zone, which is, in this case, RH. And I don't know if I'm confusing explanation, perhaps Joan Hut has a better explanation.
This is the way that Mr. Hut explained it to me, because I was really confused when we talked about this. So this would allow, for example, if you wanted to have the, have a restaurant, and kind of have the restaurant owner live above that property, and, is that about?
It was just, I think it's just changing the designation to not functionally change anything, but to make it correct, which is using a land, land use designation rather than a zoning designation, and just have the same function actually transfer over?
He keeps to give me that look all the time. I used to get that look all the time.
The thing is before is RE equaled RH plus the ability to have basically offices, like you could have an accountancy office, lawyer's office, something like that. So for that section of Sierra Madre Boulevard, nothing changed. It sounds more convoluted, but the real reason why we wanted to have an overlay of the ability to have limited business uses is because there's some areas we wanted to be able to have less development potential, but still have the combination of limited business. And one of those is on South Baldwin, you'll see a section there that, that switched. That was an RE that would allow apartments, but there's a desire to keep those old houses there. In the eighties, they tried to do that by having a historic overlay zone that fizzled, and so the idea there was, we could keep that to be RL for single-family, but because we have an overlay district, you could have, you know, a dentist's office or a lawyer's office. And similarly, on Windsor, there's a section up, you can see where the crosshatching is, where there's a bunch of really little lots that are developed into single-family houses, which you don't want to switch to anything else, but it's right in town, it would be a fine place to have, you know, a little office as well. So the idea, the reason for bifurcating that and making overlays on was so that we could have those limited business uses in areas where you had single-family or duplex as opposed to only RH.
If I may expand on that, so what the overlay does is that it allows you to maintain the underlying zone. So the underlying zone could be single-family, it could be two-family, but it allows you to also have these professional uses without changing the zone.
Got it.
So, so, because as it is today, in order for you to have those additional uses, it has to be R3, it has to be R3 standards, it has to be an R3 type of, of, of zone, and the standards that follow are only the R3 standards. This would allow things to stay as they are, but allow an option of also having these professional offices. If it's a single-family home, you can still have them, and that's not the case today.
So are overlay zones common in general plan, in land designation maps, or are they more common in zoning maps?
Well, the, it could be either, I mean, it would show up as, yeah, it would show up as, as an option, as a zoning option as well. It will have to have its, its, you know, specified uses that are allowed under that overlay zone.
Right.
But the zoning standards will continue to be of the existing underlying zone, whatever that zone may be, it could be an R1 zone, it could be an R2 zone, and that's the benefit of changing it.
But you don't do an overlay on the zoning map, right? Or do you?
The zoning will stay the same, right?
Yeah, you can do that, no, the zoning will stay the same, but you will also show the overlay on that zoning.
It'll be on there.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, just to continue.
I think we're also kind of mixing some terms, like R1, R2.
Yeah, those are zoning designations, because we're talking about zoning standards.
Right. Just so everybody knows, these are the, the land use map has, is like RH, which is.
Right, RL for, exactly, RL, RH, RM, those would be the land use designations.
And Latisha, sorry, residential entrepreneur, did we make up that designation? Is that, or is that a common parlance that?
That's already a land use designation, that's an existing land use designation. What this would do is that it would no longer be a land use designation, it would be an overlay zone in those, in those areas. It, yeah.
Okay.
And then, just the last question, you said residential professional, you referred to that, but that no longer is something that we will use in our land use designation?
That is correct, I mean, that, because now. That is correct. I mean, that, because now, what you're going to have underlying in terms of the zoning standards that are applicable to the RE designation would be the zoning standards of whatever zone is, is there. Like, for example, here, this is already R3 zone. So it will remain that way. This is, this is also already R3 zone. It will remain that way. In this case, and that's the boundary here. In this case here, it is actually RM. It will, the recommendation was that it's now RH with the overlay. So that would, that land use designation would change. It is, because it's currently RE. This is currently RE land use designation. The recommendation is that it's changed to RM land use designation with the RE overlay. So it would still allow those professional uses.
Then by changing it to RH there, it would increase the potential for density there?
Well, it actually exists today anyway, because the corresponding zoning for the existing RE designation allows any uses in the R3 zone, which is RH designation in the land use map. So that doesn't change. The density will not change, because it's already allowed today under the current land use designation in corresponding zone.
Well, is that really true, though? Because in that, in that middle area there?
This middle?
Yeah, that one, right there. You said that today is, is R, wait a minute.
RM. I mean, I'm sorry, today it's, it is RE designation. The corresponding zoning designation to the RE land use designation is RP. The RP zone allows
Okay.
R3 uses.
Okay, so that's RP today. That was my question. What is its zone? It's RP?
It is RP, which allows R3 uses in addition to the professional architects, you know, professional, yeah.
I see.
So it really doesn't change
That's not a change, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't change that. It just
Now, you know, below it, you've got some RL moving to RM. That's a different story.
Let's see, below you have, here, this little corner here, it's RE, same thing as this. It would be RE to R, actually not, not same thing, I'm sorry, same thing as this. It would go from RE to RH. It's residential entrepreneur. As it is currently here, it would go to RH.
Yeah. And right below that, it's R?
Uh, let's see, right below, oh, here. You're talking about, I'm sorry, you're referring to this?
Yeah, RL to RH.
This is what the committee recommended was it's RL to RH. However, when you look at these properties and what it actually can sustain, the planning commission recommended RL to RM, because you could not achieve the densities that are allowed under RM. So the more appropriate designation would actually be RM.
Yes.
Okay. Here, currently, this is RM. And just to be sure, this is municipal, so this boundary should have really been here. This is municipal, this is the library, and so is this property. So the boundary really is here. Currently, that is RM. So it would continue to be RM, but with the RE overlay.
So Director Cardoso, what was the, what was the thinking of going from RL to RM on that park, the property at Park and, what is that, Ramona?
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Property?
Yeah, no, to your left.
This, this one?
Mm-hmm.
The, when you look at these lot sizes, and you look at the required minimum lot size for units in the RH designation?
No, I'm saying, why would we change it from RL? Why change it at all?
Um, yeah, I think you probably remember better than I do.
Well, you can look on Google Maps, it helps. Those are apartments already. Except for, except for one of the properties, they're all apartments already. So the idea was just to try to make the thing conform to what's already there. Because they're already built, I don't think it really makes any difference which way you go. So if the planning commission thinks RM is better, I'm totally fine with that. But you can see that there's, if you, if you look at this chunk, there's sort of four parcels, the two on the top that are horizontal, and then the two on the bottom that are, that are taller. And the horizontal ones and the tall one to the right all have apartments. And it looks like the one that might not is the one right on the corner, just from looking at Google Maps.
Got it. So was that one of those cases where it was RL, but it was still zoned, R3, and that's how they were able?
Yeah, and that too. We looked at the zoning maps as well.
Interesting. Barbara Lee?
Before I get a little bit misty and conglutted, so if I can have LaTisha and John explain then. Since this also, the overlay zone encompasses Measure V, which is from Sunnyside all the way down through Mountain Trail, then would this take a vote of the people to change anything going into RL or RH, or any of the other overlay zoning that we're talking about?
It's not, it's not Measure V.
Yeah, this is outside Measure V. In fact, there's a line here that you can see. This is, this is a boundary here of Measure V, this darker line. So it comes all the way here. So this is actually outside of that area.
And we're putting the Measure V in there this time, right? Because when we looked at it, Measure V wasn't part of the land use.
The land use map? Yes, because, while the original
I know, but we put it on there.
Oh.
Yeah. Yeah, that was one of the things that we put on.
And the only, I have a question on the, so if you go to Auburn and Highland, the property went over, it's going from institutional to RH? Is that just because that's already an apartment building?
Correct, correct. The other thing I wanted to, that I actually noticed after this went to the commission, and I want to bring this to your attention, is this area here, I know it's very hard to see, and maybe it's easier to follow on your own maps. What the steering committee recommended was a change from RH to C in this area here. However, the, this, this property here, and that's the corner of Montecito Court in Auburn, that's actually a city lot. It's a city parking lot. It's the Auburn lot. So it should really be municipal.
Yeah.
This property, this very, very small property on this corner here is actually a single-family residence. That should really be RL.
Change that to M.
This property here at the lower corner is used as a parking lot now, but it is privately owned. So that one, if you wish to rezone it as, you know, redesignate it as C, I mean, that's an option, you know, it's, you know, valid option if you wish. But I just wanted to point that out, that this actually is a city lot. So that really, the more appropriate land use should be M for municipal. And then the other one here should really remain RL for those reasons that, you know, because there is actually an RL use there today. So I just wanted to point that out and see
That makes sense.
Is that okay? Do you agree with that?
Would you want to include it in the overlay for, that you have on Windsor Lane there? Because, you know, I think the whole point of the overlay there on Windsor was that we want them to continue to be houses. I think that's the, the goal, but maybe with the overlay, just in case.
The reasoning we thought there was that the more important overlay was Measure V. And so, what we tried to do, because residential uses are allowed in commercial zoning, including single-family, we tried to get all of the property in the Measure V area to be commercial. The, and that's also a question I have, is this one little lot on Lima that the planning commission changed from commercial to RH, even though it's, it's a house as well. It just seems like having tiny little chunks of R1 in Measure V doesn't make a lot of sense. And the probably people will use those just as single-family houses forever. And whether you call it single-family and then have an overlay, or you call it commercial, you're going to get the exact same effective use. There was some concern also about the way Measure V was written, that it might allow commercial uses, so, within its area. So we thought, if we just sort of standardize it and make it commercial, you know, the amount of residential, the amount of commercial is limited by Measure V, that's really what's going to control. So that was, we're trying to simplify, and, you know, the parking lot's a parking lot, if you want to make that municipal, that makes sense. But those, that one little house on Windsor, and then the one little house on Lima, just south of the corner of Lima, it's Sierra Madre Boulevard, I think it would be more consistent just to make it commercial and leave the Measure V overlay.
Mm-hmm.
I just have to add from my memory, because I have some of the older maps, that with Measure V, it needs to be voted on by the public, any changes that are to be made in any type of zoning. That's why we have the Kennington, it went to vote, and the city people said, "Yeah, let's go ahead and make a change there." But my old maps show it from Sunnyside down the Mountain Trail up to Montecito, one block below Sierra Madre Boulevard. So I've got to come in and check my maps to be clear as to what maps are being used here with the city. And I only question that because one time the maps were incorrect on the hillside. So I want to make sure that Measure V is still protecting downtown area.
Well, my understanding is that Measure V is just, restricts the height, the density, 13 units per acre. And one more thing, what was it?
It's 13 units per acre, 30, 30 feet high.
30 feet high.
Correct, and two-story.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we're discussing anything that affects those things that Measure V is protecting. So, but going back to that, that one little square on Lima, why was it they suggested that be RH, just because there is a house there?
Because it is, it is adjacent to RH uses here, of multifamily uses here. There is a single-family home there. Now it is a separate lot. It is not a commercial use.
Really small.
So it is to make it consistent with what is on the ground today. Anytime there, there are any changes made to properties like these, say it's a, it's a single-family residential, single-family residential is not allowed in the commercial zone. You are applying zoning standards for commercial to a single-family home. It's, it's a, it's just a very difficult application.
I understand that, but I mean, I thought the purpose of planning is to just lay out what the vision is ultimately going to be, understanding that there will be some migration of use. I mean, isn't that the purpose? Otherwise, we'd have this thing all hopscotched all over the place.
Well, that, that's one of the purposes. I mean, you're, if that's your intention, you know, if the intention is not to allow for future residential there, yes, you're perfectly fine changing it to however you want to change to commercial, say. It just depends on what you're trying, what your long-range
Well, yeah.
...is. It can go either way.
I just think it's, I just think it's strange to have one little RH there, when you, when really it's, it's, it's got commercial use around it. I know it's below the line, it's R, you know, but I mean, just above it and to the right of it, I mean, you're just taking out a little chunk and making it. So I think it fits more with commercial in that particular case.
And that's perfectly fine. If the idea is that in the long run, say, that house could be demolished, and eventually maybe it would be part of commercial, that's perfectly fine to maintain it as is. It just depends, again, on what your long-range
Yeah.
...idea for that parcel should be.
Yeah.
You know, entirely, it's your option of what you think it should look like in the future, it should be like in the future. It's entirely your decision.
The same goes for, again, the institutional use up in the corner of Highland and Baldwin. I mean, that's Bethany School up there. And I, you know, there is the two lots on Montecito, one is a parking lot. No, one, one is, is just grass. You've got the parking lot, and just to the right of that is just grass, and then there's one house sitting there.
Right, this tiny
Now, I just don't think that's practical to keep that as, I don't know, what, what zone is that? Is that, I can't tell.
The, you mean the land use here?
Yeah, up there, just where the institutional is.
Oh, here.
Yeah, there's the two lots that are surrounded by the institutional. Go down, yeah.
This one, yes.
What is that zone?
It's residential.
That's residential. It just seems ridiculous to have a block there where, you know, especially since Bethany owns one of those lots. I mean, they, I know they would like to buy all of them and can just continue it. It just, I just think it's crazy to, just to keep that land use as residential there, when I think the intent would be to allow the school to develop that property for institutional.
Well, these two are not owned by the school, from what I understand. This one is, and these two are.
I thought the, I thought the one is, it's, it's got grass on it, and Bethany, yeah.
I don't think that these are.
I'm pretty sure.
Are you?
I'm pretty sure they own that property. They just own, don't own the one with the house on it.
Okay. Now, what this would mean is that, you know, if that house is ever demolished, they would not be able to
Exactly.
It would be, have to be institutional.
I would just think that just makes more sense to have that all institu-, you know, I have nothing to do with Bethany. I'm just saying that if you're just looking at this from an objective point of view, I don't see why you would plan to keep that residential. It's, it's surrounded by institutional use.
Correct, that's right.
And the same, you know, the same, well, I've got the other problem, yeah, which is, you know, backwards. We've got the one lot that's institutional use now to make that RH. Well, again, a duplex sits on that one. A duplex sits on the corner, the southeast corner of Highland and Auburn. A single-family home is right below that, and a new single-family home, by the way. Why would we be making that RH? That just doesn't make sense to me.
It's just that one little square that's an RH.
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah. So first of all, I don't understand why that one is institutional, because there's a duplex on it, you know? I mean, it's just, I just think it's all
But I think that's why, I think what happened, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it was institutional, and then they said, "No." The planning commission said, "But there's a duplex on it, so they need, you need to take that away, the institutional away."
Okay, so now you're going to make it RH, when it is a duplex. To the west of it, it's a duplex, and below that one is a single-family home. And the recommendation is to make those all RH. I think those should be RM. I don't know what my peers feel about that in the town.
No, they're not making all of it RH. They're just making that one little block, right?
No, look.
The committee's recommendation is in red.
See, this is, this is RH.
Oh, that one.
And then they basically broadened it.
This one right here is a single-family. This one's a duplex, and this is a duplex. So I'd say, you know, this all should be RM, even though there's a single-family here, but just to keep it somewhat consistent, you know? I mean, that, that's a beautiful new home. It's never going to get torn down, but, you know, why do we
You never know.
Well, you never know. And yeah, that's my point about RH, is again, if you have lot consolidation, if somebody could, I, you know, you just never know. I mean, that was owned by Bethany at one time, and now just the former pastor owns it, but.
So Mayor Perretam, you're looking at making those three lots RM, your suggestion?
I would say RM.
And then those two below, in between, and make that institutional?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine.
So this should remain RM?
That should remain RM.
Okay, and then this one?
That one should be RM.
Also RM, okay.
And drop down
And these institutional.
Should be institutional.
Okay.
And leave it alone.
Could I make a, let me jump in here?
Go ahead.
Only because I know we as a city try to depend on voting in utility taxes. If you start including areas to be institutional, you'll no longer have a tax base. That's why we were really protective of the congregational church when it was buying up so much property.
Mm-hmm.
You no longer get a tax
You no longer get a tax base, that's all institutional. So keeping, even though it might make sense on the map, who knows, twenty years from now, thirty years from now, maybe it's all gonna be institutional, but to hold on to property tax, I think, is something that really needs to be checked and taken a look. We lost in the business district, we lost, when the Kensington was voted in, we lost that whole business district. So we don't have any more revenue coming in from that.
Well, that's.
So when you're looking at the zoning, instead of saying, okay, it looks, looks choppy, you know, take a look also at the tax base, that's just something I'm aware of.
Thank you, Barbara Lee. Yeah, I don't have a problem with that recommendation, just to leave that RM, and...
Yeah, that's fine.
I don't think it's gonna affect the tax base that much.
No, it's not.
Well, to your point, though, John, what, why would we, why would we change that one blue square, though, to RM? I mean, why not just keep it institutional?
Because it's got a duplex on it now.
It's not institutional.
And it's not? It is.
Well, it's zoned institutional right now, I mean, why even change it?
It's blue right now.
But I think that was the...
The use is not institutional.
The use is not institutional.
Right.
So just, yeah, that would, yeah, go along with what Barbara Lee is saying, is that, why would you ever want that to be institutional? It's a duplex now, why don't we keep that as a, you know, but on the other hand...
Same reasons that we wouldn't want to.
Well, true, but those are surrounded by, it just seems like an impractical thing to, you know, surround it. You know, this, this way you've got continuity of neighborhoods. I mean, if you even just go along there, it just looks ridiculous that you've got one house sitting between a parking lot, a, a green space, and, and playground. You know, I just don't think that's a, I, I don't think that's the vision of our city, is to have it chopped up in such fashion, you know? So what I'm proposing is more continuity with what's around it.
That's fine with it.
Are you clear on the direction there?
On this one, but I'm not clear on the, on this one here, which is the, the city lot and the properties here. So I, I believe that what the direction was here, and correct me if I'm mistaken, is that you agree with the municipal for the city lot.
Mm-hmm.
But leaving these two as commercial, is that correct?
No, I got RL.
RL.
I don't know if there's consensus, was that?
No, I just think you need to leave it commercial, just makes sense. That's, that's what you wanna stop getting away from, is all these little property pieces, yeah.
Or the area, though?
No.
Well, wait a minute, those are two little lots right there?
Yes, the, the upper one, the little tiny one here in the corner, is a, is currently a, a single-family residence. South of it is another private lot, which is used as a parking lot, where the business is along Sierra Madre Boulevard here, so...
So that one should be...
The recommendation was that it be C, these two little lots, C, and this city lot be C.
Wasn't that municipal?
I mean, so what, what I said is, since this is a city lot...
Okay, so the, the lower of the two little lots.
Yes, this one.
Is a parking lot today.
Yes, privately owned.
Private parking lot.
With a garage right next to it, or that?
And then the one to the north, which is a tiny lot, is a house, it's a single-family residence.
Could you point out the historical area, the old adobe?
That's on the other side.
Is that on the other side of the parking lot?
Yes, yes, it's on east Montecito.
Oh, okay, then.
I'm fine keeping it commercial, for the reasons, I think Ms. Trout made a good point about, you know, if you wanted to keep it clean within the Measure V zone, you're keeping it commercial, and I don't think that, from a planning perspective, you really wanna keep those.
Right, right.
You don't wanna keep that as residential.
Yeah, that's, it's sort of, yeah, I, I agree.
So those two should be commercial?
Yeah.
Is that what I'm, I'm hearing? Okay.
And we also turn that other little one on Lima back to commercial?
And the one on Lima also commercial?
I think so.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And then the other, the other things we need to discuss, then, is a, you know, concern I raised before along Baldwin, of changing that from RM to RH.
Yes.
Baldwin there.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I did talk to John Hud about it earlier, and I'm, I'm less concerned about it now after talking to him, but, you know, maybe John should...
Yeah, I, I also have a little bit of a summary of that also.
Okay.
And I can show that after, if you'd like to.
So now we're on four?
It, it shows a little bit on this one, as, also on this quadrant, it's kind of split between two quadrants.
I, I think one of the issues with, with that area was that the zoning is R3, right?
Correct.
So the, the idea there was to convert the general plan designation to match the zoning. But I, I think it's perfectly legitimate to say, we should leave the general plan designation and change the zoning.
Right, and then change the zoning.
Either way is fine, and the other part of it is, these are relatively small lots that aren't gonna get a lot of development under either system, and I also think that, you know, when you look at the map and you look at the code, you have to sort of think of both at the same time.
Yeah.
And as I talked to Councilmember Capocha earlier today, I think that when you, you have concerns about some of the multifamily marching up Baldwin, there might be a natural reaction to sort of curtail the code, but I think a better answer to that is to change the map, because when you have stuff on, you know, Baldwin, or, or, I'm sorry, Sierra Madre Boulevard, that looks like our typical R3, you know, you don't wanna curtail that, it makes more sense to say, well, is the map right, and do we really want this section to be RM rather than RH? So I think, you know, we wanna, whatever we do, we wanna bring the code and the, and the general plan designation into consistency. RM, I think is fine. I, I think RH is fine, 'cause I don't really think it's gonna make a whole host of difference one way or the other, but, you know, pick one and then make them both the same.
Well, I, I just think it's safer to keep it RM, and, you know, twenty years from now, it makes more sense to have it RH, do it then. And, and I agree, after talking to you, that the chance of lot consolidation is probably slim, but as I, you know, my comments to you was, we're, we're always chasing the develop, how things develop. I mean, we, we got behind with the hillside zone and had to go back twice there. Develop, you don't know what developers are gonna do, or what economic drivers are gonna be there. I mean, my fear is that property is so expensive that the younger generation is not gonna be able to afford single-family houses here in Sierra Madre, but Sierra Madre being such a desirable place to live, that people will forego a single-family home to move into a multifamily, thus creating pressures to develop with more multifamily. So I'm, I'm just worried about that, and I just think it's just a safer thing to keep it RM, and that way, you know, we should work towards rezoning it to R2, and then we don't have to worry about it, you know?
Just for, just maybe a little bit of clarification, it's a little, hopefully we'll clarify, I, I basically did a little, just a little step-by-step of the thought process here, just to illustrate what the outcome may be between those two different options. As you know, the current land use is RM, corresponds to the R2 zone, the current zoning is R3, which means RH, so you have an option to do either one, to make it consistent. So in regards, with regards to the density consideration, you determine how either one would affect your outcome in terms of the density. On a lot-by-lot basis, I compared what's on the ground today, the number of units that are on the ground today, and then I calculated what these designations could result, and, and this is what I came up with, without lot consolidation. So there's actually, in either case, there's actually a reduction, because some of what's there today is already non-conforming, it's higher density with, with, particularly with the properties on the corner of, I believe it's Highland, north, east corner of Highland and Baldwin. There are two multifamily units there, multifamily apartments there, that are actually higher density today than would be allowed, under either one of these scenarios. So, and I think it follows exactly what Councilman Capocha was saying, is that there really isn't, either way, doing one way or the other, you, you probably wouldn't see a whole lot of difference, unless, of course, there's lot consolidation, but even with lot consolidation, it's limited. You don't have a long, long block that provides you with very large lots, in, in a, in a good number of them.
Yeah.
So in the build-out numbers, I don't know if you remember this.
Yeah.
Staff came up with a potential lot consolidation that we felt might be more possible than others, and we really came up with a total of five lots, that would be like a maximum amount, number of lots that you would get with a, with a higher density.
Well, yeah, but let me just make a point, I mean, there's, I know that there's one property, I think it's just north of Laurel. Is it the, the second lot north of Laurel, I think...
On what's?
On Baldwin, just north of Laurel, the second lot.
On the east or west side of Baldwin?
On, on the east side.
The east side?
Okay, I think it's the second lot. I think there's like a duplex, or maybe three units on that, and next to that is an old single-family home. And I believe both of those lots are owned by the same person. So, and I think, go north one more, and I think there's another old home there. I could see where it's conceivable that a developer could buy all three, scrape everything, and build, you know, up to eighteen units per acre, I don't know how many units could go on there, but, I mean, you, you know, I know we went through the process, but I'm, what I'm trying to say is, I could still see scenarios where that could happen, and if it could happen, everybody here in Sierra Madre has to be prepared for, if it could happen, it might happen, and is that what you want?
Correct.
And I'm saying, just my opinion, no, that's not what we want. So I think if you left it R2, that could never happen. So why would you change it to R3? Unless that's what you want, whether you, you're predicting the probability of it happening or not. If you don't, if that's not what you want, don't zone it that way.
Correct.
So then you're saying that we should just go back to RM, so that we can match it up to R2 later?
Yeah.
And, and, I mean, your logic made sense on that, on that page, but with that thought process, I mean...
Yeah, I would just...
Going RM and then changing R2s is fine.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I don't think it matters, it's just, you know, making sure that...
I don't think it does either.
That they match up, so if you wanna go RM and R2, that's fine. If you wanna match it to the zoning, or if you want, you know...
Well, see, I know, that's the part that I'm trying to stay away from, it's, it's not about matching, to me, it's about planning. What do you want to happen? And I think we should just keep the blinders on, as far as what the zoning is, what do you really want it to be?
We want the less probability of being able to combine lots.
Then I think we're better with RM, yeah.
That's what we want.
That's fine, we'll stay at RM. And also, the, if you look at the, the zoning map, on Laurel, where Laurel kind of just west of Baldwin, you have that pocket there of R2, and...
Yeah.
I think if you go down that street, those are all just single-family homes. If I don't, and maybe there's a, maybe there's a two...
Well, that's...
A two-unit lot.
Yeah.
I'm wondering why, why would you keep that RM there, and why wouldn't you just convert that pocket there, if you look on the zoning map, to RL? You know, I just don't...
Well, yeah, yeah.
To the land use?
If you look at Nor-, if you look at Laurel Avenue, west, west of Baldwin, east of Auburn, there's a pocket there that kind of just sticks out, which, if you look on the zoning map, is, it's all zoned R2, for some unapparent reason, and it's, the designation is RM, but I'm wondering why you would even make that RM? To your, you know, to the Mayor Proten's point, I, I agree, I mean, I don't think that you wanna make it easier to make any of these lots multifamily. Now, R2 would obviously just be splitting the lot into two, or putting two units on instead of one, so why wouldn't we wanna make, they're small lots as it is, why wouldn't you just wanna make it RL? And then, you know, your planning...
On page three or page four?
We're on page three, it's on Laurel.
So Laurel west of Baldwin?
Just if you, yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm.
East of Auburn?
There's, yep, there's a patch there, a group of lots.
It's easier to see on the zoning map.
Yeah, she has it out.
Okay, yeah.
It's, there's a group of lots there, probably ten lots, twelve lots, that are R2, for some unapparent reason.
Can you go up and point?
Yeah.
John, do you see him?
It's most of the block.
You're talking about this here?
Yeah, just that. So, you know, I don't know why that would be R2, and why that'd be RM, unless I'm... So I guess I would suggest just making that RL, unless there's a good reason not to.
Well, I think it's a larger question, because we haven't got there yet, but I was gonna make the same point about all this here.
Just making it RL.
Is primarily either single-family or two-on-a-lot. I know there's an apartment building right here, but that's the only one I know of.
Yeah.
There might be another one up here somewhere, but for the most part, all this in here is either single-family or two-on-a-lot, and yet it's zoned for R3, R3. I don't think it should be R3.
Okay.
And I, you know, just clarification, I live there, and I live in a single-family, and I'm surrounded by single-family for the most part, or a duplex next door, but, you know, I, you, but I just wanna make it clear, I don't game financially by changing this, I just think it's the right thing to do. It's probably hurts me financially to change it from R3 to R2 or some, or to RL.
Probably does.
So this is along Victoria Lane, am I understanding this correctly?
It is along Laurel.
Well, Highland and Laurel.
It's north of Victoria Lane.
Okay.
So it'd be that patch there.
Okay, so that's...
Where the R3 is, Victoria Lane, right?
Yeah, so...
Those are single-family.
The question is, if you wanted to go north of Highland, from Auburn to Baldwin, you know, do you wanna, you know, do you wanna make that RL?
Well, I guess, John, would you say RM for the RH?
Right.
For...
I would...
Would you make it RL, or what would you do?
I would make all of that, that whole area, north of Highland, well, actually, south of Highland, too, I would make it all, as, as I just, we'd already talked about that, south of Highland is keeping that RM. I would make all of Highland, Victoria Lane, and Laurel, I would just keep it all RM.
Yeah, and I guess my point was just to, why keep it RM with, on that patch and on Laurel, when it's all...
Well, my, my...
It's all R1s, you know, it should be all...
My understanding is, I don't know, there might be some houses behind the front house on, on Laurel.
Right, yeah, there are also, on...
Are there?
On Auburn, or facing Auburn, there's, there's some multifamily at the, the end of those. I, the other thing is, I, I don't think there's a need to, to have the whole block be the same, you know, it's common, you see in other parts of the map, that the end piece that's facing a bigger street might be multifamily, and mid-block is single-family.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I think that if, if you have sort of the RM or RH along Auburn, and then mid-block, you wanna go RM or even RL.
RL.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess I'd suggest that if we, if we had kept, on the border of Auburn, where it hits Laurel, you can keep that RM, but why not go RL to the east of that? I mean, I don't...
Sure.
Yeah, sure, why not?
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Let me see if I can understand what you just said, yeah.
I mean...
So if you, okay, so if you don't mind, Grandview, so the block between Grandview to the north and Laurel, and then Auburn and Baldwin, right? That block, that very first block, what are the changes that you'd like to see there, so that I'm clear?
That patch, so you wanna make, yeah, if you put the...
Put a bigger map, it's, you can't really see it from here, put the quadrant back up.
So then you're talking about here, right? So this area here...
Yep.
What are we?
You were talking, it's gonna be both north and south of Laurel?
Yeah, this block, yeah.
Yeah.
What, what is your...
You keep RM on, right, you keep RM bordering Auburn.
Here.
Yeah.
These four properties.
And below it.
And here.
Right, but then, within there, you fill in RL.
And the rest is RL.[1751.96]
Right.
And.
Okay, so let me.
All the way down to Highland, or you'd stop at Victoria Lane?
Well, and that's what the mayor pro temp brought up. I, I think you could go all the way to Highland.
Well, there's, I, I can tell you like on, well.
Then on here.
You could, I'm not sure, you know, the question would be whether you want to go RL or RM. But I, I think it definitely should be RM versus RH. Now, whether you want to make all that.
Is it, is it RH?
Let me see if I can do this here.
So let's see.
Yeah, I'm trying to do it from both maps here.
It's.
I can see why this was very confusing for you yesterday.
I mean, the, the maps are so dense that it's just really hard to.
If you draw it on the zoning.
Yeah, I would do RM here. I can't, I can't even read the numbers on the zoning map.
I think that, along Highland, we need to keep that high density higher. And then below, and then up above it, we can go to the, either RM or a single.
So along, along Highland, keep it?
Keep it what it is.
R3?
You can go R2.
Or, R, it's, it's RH today, isn't it?
It's R3 right now.
What, in what pattern, what are you trying to accomplish with that?
Okay, so here is.
Well, just to preserve, the, the goal is to just preserve the residential character of it and not incent to.
And so why do we want to do RM on the, on Highland, on Auburn?
Keep, sorry, there's like a border there.
So this is here?
Well, because it, it is, it is built as RM, so it is, yeah. I know like.
We could turn that into RL, too.
Yeah, but some of it is RL.
Yeah, but we're, we're planning the future, right, so.
Yeah.
That would get rid of multifamily dwellings, or reduce them in the future. One RM there, I'm, I'm cool with that.
No, that's, it's fine, but.
Seems like we're trying to reduce density, it seems like.
Oh, wait, that, that's how you described it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, just, so what Mayor Harry Bedian explained to me is that this is what he is envisioning here. So these properties along here and here. So the first two here, along this area, all would be then RM, and everything beyond that would be RL.
RL, yeah.
Right. And then to Councilor Del Mar's point, if you wanted to leave that, the bottom strip above Highland is RH, that's what you were, were you recommending that?
I was just thinking about it, um.
Yeah.
The bottom strip along Highland?
Yeah.
And why do we want RM anywhere there?
Well, yeah.
I'm not quite sure about that.
Yeah, see, because, let's talk about the bottom strip along Highland. I mean, I can go through that on the course, case by case here.
Do we have consensus, though, that everything else should be RL other than?
Yeah, fine.
Okay, so I think that we have consensus.
See, that corner one is a duplex. The next one's single-family, no, above it, above, I can't reach that high. The second one is single-family. That one's single-family, single-family, single-family.
I think they all are, except for that one.
Then there's the two on the property there.
So here.
Then, single-family, single-family, then apart, or one of these is an apartment. I think there's one apartment. So in other words, there's one with two on it, there's an apartment building, and the rest are single-family.
And the reality is probably because of the lot sizes, that's probably all you could get that really is single-family. There's, there's a likelihood that, unless you consolidate.
Make it RL.
Yeah, RL.
And see, and this is the point I discussed with Mr. Hutt, is, you know, mine is single-family today. My wife and I are getting older. At some point, we may sell. My next-door neighbor's a realtor. She may want to snap up my property.
RL.
RL.
Yeah, I go with RL.
You scared me enough. I mean, if, yeah, if, if everything's going to exist the way they are now, fine, and for planning the future, RL. I'm okay with that.
Okay, so as, if I understand correctly, oh. So these then would all be RL, including this, these two on the corner, is that correct? This entire.
No, I think they.
That corner one.
Still keep the corner as you.
The RM.
So these are still RM, right? And just so that I'm clear, this, this property and the one next to it, or just the two that front Auburn?
Just the corner. Those are both duplexes.
Okay, so those would be RM, okay. But everything else is RL there?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
These are all single-family homes, for the most part.
Okay.
Now, is there any other areas that we have the same concerns about?
I can't think of what that is.
I don't think she's covered the south side, the south section of Baldwin yet.
Yeah.
Describe the different, the changes there. South of Mariposa, on Baldwin. There's two changes there, you haven't gone over those yet.
Oh, sure, down below, yes. Yes, the current designation here, we'll start with this one, is residential entrepreneur. And the, and, and the recommendation was that it is RL, change to RL with an overlay of RE.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's right, that's where it started.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And then here would be going from RE to commercial. This corner here.
And again, that's just to capture the, the Measure V, right?
Yeah, that, that, that's the post office property on the corner of Mariposa.
Yeah, that seems.
And Baldwin.
Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I also, before we move, move on, I wanted to address another inconsistency.
Is that the Congregational Church, is that?
Yes. The Planning Commission, the, the Steering Committee recommended this particular property here to go from commercial to institutional. And let me explain that a little better, because there's a lot going on there. That corner is complicated. The current, the current zoning designation is institutional here. So what this would do is, would match up the land use designation to institutional, okay? The Planning Commission agreed, as you can see, stayed the same. Now, this corner, which is where the Life Center is, is currently zoned institutional with the land use of commercial, as you can see here. So the choice is to go either way, to, to make it match. So again, it's, the zone, the zoning here is institutional, and the land use is commercial.
I would think you'd want to make all that commercial.
Well, okay, but next door, you've got institutional, so are you?
It's institutional just because of the, the ownership. I mean, that doesn't mean that they couldn't develop that into a commercial.
Right, and I'm good with that. I just wanted to make it perfectly clear, again, that's consistent with my philosophy. What do, what do you vision it to be?
I'd rather have a, you know.
That should be commercial.
A commercial.
So this would be commercial, okay.
Well, next door to it, it should be two.
And this should be commercial as well?
All of it should be commercial.
Okay.
And you're saying also south of, south of Sierra Madre Boulevard?
Uh, no.
We haven't gotten that far yet.
Yes, and then south, yes, the south, the south side. This is, this is consistent. There's no, there's no issue here. This is a sanctuary, there's no issue, it's consistent. Institutional zone, institutional land use. Here, you have the zoning, which is institutional, but the land use is commercial.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Commercial.
So then keep it commercial and change the zoning to commercial.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'll make that commercial, too.
Well, it is already commercial, so I'd just keep it there. And then, you know, for the zoning, I would, I would change.
The land use is commercial, but the.
Same logic with the.
But the zone is institutional. The zoning is currently institutional for those properties on the south there.
You don't like that?
And the land use is commercial.
I don't, no, not necessarily. I mean, I'm okay with it, I just.
It's one of those where you wouldn't necessarily have to change the zoning code?
I wouldn't have pushed it, no. But, I mean, if that's the vision, we think that should be ultimately commercial property, then we should say so. Can I just make it, ask a question about what that means in reality? So, like, just talking about that corner of north, northeast corner of Hermosa and Sierra Madre Boulevard. If they wanted to, if the Congregational Church wanted to demolish that, and it is zoned commercial, they could not rebuild it with an institutional-like structure. It would have to be.
That is correct.
Oh.
Yeah, storefront type.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Interesting.
Same thing for, you know, this area here, if, well, it is already a commercial building, so, yeah.
Yeah.
On the south side, it's already a commercial building, so it's owned by the church, but it's commercial, so.
How long have the, how long have the two properties north of the Boulevard been institutional? Since the last general plan, or forever, or what?
Uh, let's see, the zoning has been institutional.
How long?
I, I don't know the answer to that question.
It probably.
So I, I'm wanting to know what the compelling reason is to change that to commercial. Well, tell me when it was turned institutional, if it was always commercial.
And the church is starting buying up property?
When was that?
No, well, one of those is the Old North Church, isn't it? That church has been there since before there was zoning.
Right.
And the old mortuary.
On the corner, that was a mortuary?
I'm just thinking, we, you know, and I realize it's in a commercial zone, I know, I see it's Measure V area, but, but, you know, we're not looking at other churches in town and looking at their institutional designations. And I'm.
If they keep on buying up, you'll have like, the whole town institutional zoning.
Well, possibly, but, but.
I think the argument that it's within the Measure V area, though.
I think there's a law against that, too much institutional zoning, you know. What's the state law, the attorney might answer that one.
Charlie, if, if you want to make a comment, just come to the, the mic, no one at home can hear you. So, it's, we're talking to ourselves. I, you know, again, I don't think it's a make or break decision. If, I, I just, I, you know, I find that to be a commercial zone. I understand that it's the old church there. I, I think that as long as they keep it as the old church, it's fine. It's, they're not using, I think they use it as learning centers there, I'm not quite sure what they used with the space, but if they were to sell it, or if they were to do something else with it, I would like that to be, I envision that as being a commercial zone, that's the point, you know?
Yeah.
If the Congregational Church continues to own it, then it continues to be institutionally, uh, institutionally used, so.
You're putting pretty significant limits on what they can do with it.
I think it's the opposite. I, I feel like by making it commercial, you, you open the, their ability to do different things with it.
They could sell it off.
Yeah. They can sell it, they can, I mean, they, they own the steamer, or the, uh, the building where there's the subway and all that. I mean, they own those buildings, too, so.
Not, not that building.
Well, the, then, I'm thinking of the other building next to it, then.
The one, the west, west of the immediately next to the, yes.
Yeah, excuse me.
The we, the west, yes, the one to the west.
So.
Yeah, but the point is, is that because that is, that property that they own today are commercial storefronts.
Uh-huh, and they're not being used.
They can't demolish it and create more church-type use for it.
That's right.
So, yeah, so it, no, we're not getting any tax money from it, but at least they're still storefronts, you know?
John? I think one of the frustrations with the zoning and designation of these particular parcels is that we've never, the city, as far as I know, has never seen in open, public hearing a master plan for what they want to do with the property. And I know, when I was on the Planning Commission, there was incremental changes that went along. And, you know, if, if they're going to have a master complex there, it makes sense to have a master plan, make it all institutional, and make something that works, whether they have a school or whatever. And if they're going to convert some of it back to commercial, you know, wherever that is, should go back to commercial. But it's, this is all sort of shoot, shooting in the dark without knowing what their plans are.
Yeah.
I think.
That's how it feels to me.
The church has been there a long time, so that's why we left it institutional. And obviously, the, the main Congregational Church was left institutional. But you could make an argument for the surrounding properties to go either way. And I, I don't know, you know.
I still like the argument that, you know, we, we, thinking ahead the long term, we envision it, envision it as commercial property. As, as the mayor says, as long as it's being used the way it is today, well, fine, they have the right to do that. But if there is going to be any kind of a change there, we think it should be commercial property.
Well, I mean, I think the counterargument to that is, there are other things in downtown besides commercial storefronts, like City Hall, and it's not its own commercial. And there's churches in traditional little towns, so, you know.
Right, but it's no longer being, yeah, it's no longer being used as a church.
Well, what do you do when you get sort of pseudo-churchy uses?
Right.
Like life centers or schools or things like that, you know? That's where it becomes difficult to decide.
But I think you made a good point. If there was a master plan that they had, they should submit that, and we should consider it. If we haven't seen a master plan, then we're, we're, we're doing our planning right now.
Right, I agree.
We're not, yeah.
I think, I, I don't think there's much hope of, you know, getting it right without that, so.
Yeah.
I, I don't remember why we changed that one chunk from commercial to institutional, may, probably because the church owned it. And I think they had some plan going at that time, but I don't think it makes any difference if that's commercial or institutional, really. Without a master plan, you don't know what's going to really happen.
I'd go all commercial, if you're the actual church.
And that, that's exactly why we did it. It's because we didn't have a master plan, we had nothing, so it's sort of like, okay, just going forward, what, what we'd like to see. And it needs to be commercial.
Yeah, that was back a few city council meetings ago, when there was a master plan, but it was not submitted. And part of the master plan was including a bridge crossing over to what's now the Kensington. The church was going to be buying up some more of the area. But I know, I'm not a land use attorney, but I know there's something stipulated in the state of California that you cannot have a certain amount of institutional zoning in a town. Something, and I'm going to have to, I know it's, it's someplace in the back of my head, so I know it's there. I'm going to look it up to make sure that the, that there's not an overuse, overreach of institutional zoning to match, uh, what's.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's.
Yeah, I don't think we would have reached that.
I know where I'm going, but I've got to find where that is.
All right.
Well, I'm going to dissent on that. I mean, I, I see I'm outvoted here, but I, again, don't see a compelling reason to make that change, particularly given the traditional use of that property. But I'm outvoted, so that's okay.
Just, just to clarify here, as far as, so that I understand, so the, the property above, which is part of the church property that was recommended to go from commercial to institutional. Are you agreeing with that, or are you, or are you changing it to commercial?
Changing it to commercial.
Changing it to commercial, okay. It, it, I think what may have happened here is that when the, when the institutional zone was adopted in 98, the institutional uses around the city, those properties were rezoned to, to basically apply that, that ordinance. I think that the North Church is this property here, and I think that's why it was easily picked out as institutional, because that's the old church. Uh, and then this one is a sanctuary, and I think it's possible, I know that this property here may have not been, I don't think it was owned by the church at the time, I think that was purchased in the last six years. And this one may or may not have been, I'm not sure about this one. So I think maybe that's why this ended up a little disjointed. And in, in, in 2008, the Congregational Church came before the city council to actually, with a zone change and general plan amendment, make this all consistently institutional. And I recall that that was, that was, I believe was denied by the city council.
Correct.
And since then, they have not come forward with any other proposals for any master plans, or, and I know that they had a draft master plan that I don't believe was ever finished or submitted to the city prior to this request for that general plan amendment and zone change. So since that time, we haven't heard anything from them, in terms of how they want to proceed in the future. With the change to commercial, that would preclude them from having a master plan in the future, because a master plan is a requirement of the institutional zone. It's not available in a commercial zone. So just, just to kind of clarify the, the issue.
They could always, couldn't they always apply for some sort of overlay master plan? I mean, if they wanted to really master plan it, even in a commercial zone, they could overlay.
They could do a specific.
It's kind of like what the Kensington did, I mean, that was an overlay.
They can apply for a specific. Well, yeah, well, the Kensington was, actually, they were required to do a specific plan because they were a little bit above an acre. And that's a general plan requirement currently, that you do have to go through a specific plan. Um, if, if their property is over an acre, which I don't think it would be, just considering.
Right.
Then they could, but I mean, you, you can apply for, um, you know, you can submit a specific plan, um, for, for properties.
Well, I mean, they can submit anything they want, and we can consider it. We can consider doing a general plan amendment and a zoning change to accommodate them if we feel that that's the right thing to do.
I just remembered one other reason why we changed this. If you look at the boundary for Measure V, it does a bizarre little dip under that. And I think one of the reasons we wanted to change it to, from commercial, would that be the only piece of commercially zoned property out of Measure V? And so, you know, potentially, not like it's gonna likely happen, but, you, you know, you could get a really tall building or something like that, so. I think that was the, the idea of maintaining all the commercial property in Measure V where, you know, the thought was it belongs. May, maybe the Measure V boundary wasn't so well thought out, so. But in any event, if, so if, if your goal is to sort of transition it to something else, maybe RH is more appropriate.
You're talking about the one piece on top.
I'm talking about the one piece, because then, because otherwise you're gonna have one lot zoned commercial in the whole town outside of Measure V.
Yeah.
So, y- you know, maybe you wanna go RH, maybe you wanna do institutional, I don't know.
What about the residential entrepreneur overlay, though, there? And why wouldn't you do something similar to what you do on Windsor and, uh, West Sarah Madge Boulevard? It would be a little awkward just to have that one there, but.
You, you could do that, too. You know, I, I think the, the thought was, when you go up Auburn, um, there's uses there that are commercial and office-like, and when you go up, um, most of it's not, and that's why we didn't put that up there. But, you know, it, it's close to town, it's easy to walk, you, you could do that there.
And I think now that it's adjacent to the Kensington, I do think that it would make sen- it could possibly make sense to have, in the future, a business there, you know? I don't know what, what it would be, but I guess I, I.
In the to- in the top piece or the bottom?
Yeah, the top piece. I guess to Mr. Todd's point, it's a good point, I, I'm not as concerned about. You could, because it's not Measure V, you could get a, a huge building there, but.
No, it's still, we still could, we, we could still fix the zoning to disallow it. Measure V just made sure.
No, you're absolutely right.
A limit on it, but we can make it consistent with Measure V.
Which is why I'm not that concerned about that. I think it's a.
So it could be commercial.
It could be commercial. It's just, it's just gonna be a weird beast that it's commercial and not Measure V.
An anomaly that it's outside of Measure V.
But, you know, it's Sierra Madre, so.
I just think that lot, it's different now with the Kensington going in there.
Yeah.
I think that area is, it might be.
Yeah.
You know.
So I'm, I'm okay with commercial.
I just don't want it in RH. I think that was the thing, yeah.
Yeah.
No RH.
So I think we had consensus there, not uni- uh, unanimous direction, but. Yeah, so consensus, but not unanimous. Right? Yeah, okay. All right, should we go into quadrant four, or did we have any, quadrant three was, was a wrestling match?
The toughest one. So, um, based on that discussion regarding Baldwin, uh, North Baldwin, so this, this then would remain RM on the site as well, is that, is that correct? Is this, this is part of that RM to RH, and you, and you determined that you would like to see this remain RM, right? So I'm, I'm.
Keep it RM.
Kind of stretching that out, okay. So that would be remaining RM. Okay. Um, here is the Church of the Ascension property. The steering committee and the planning commission agreed that it would go from RH to institutional. As it is part of this property. Again, it's your, it's your pleasure.
What, what's on the lots today?
I, um.
Those are, oh.
I think there's a parking lot, if I'm not mistaken.
It's not a church, that's for sure.
In a school.
Isn't there a house on one of those?
So a rectory and a schoolroom?
No, that's on the, that's on the lot to the left of it, where you vote, I believe. I think the lot that we're talking about is the one to the right, which I do think it's a, the rectory, right?
Yeah.
It's currently zoned institutional.
It's currently zoned RH.
Currently RH designation?
That's the land use designation.
That's the land.
What's it zoned?
It is currently zoned.
Zoned institutional.
Institutional. So it's zoned institutional.
So the question again is, what, what is the appropriate vision?
Well, I think it's fine leaving it institutional there. I mean, that's, unless the mayor protons right that there's, you thought that there was a house there, I think it might just be the rectory. From what we're hearing from the audience, which I think is right, so I, I think leaving that institutional is fine. Or changing it from RH to institutional for that one, for that one piece.
Is it one or two lots? I can't.
It's two lots.
It's two.
You have twenty-three.
Zoning, it's only one, though.
Oh. Yeah. It does look like two, it's two there, but on zoning, it's one.
Yeah, it's only number.
Well, you know what it is?
Oh, no, it's three.
Twenty-three incorporates one of the two. So. It's three, it's three up there.
Oh, okay.
But it's two here on the zoning map, and I think it's, I think the zoning map is right.
Yeah, let's just keep the zoning.
I would just keep it, I would change the land use designation to institutional, to make it the same as the zoning.
Yeah.
I know that's not what we've done before, but if that is just the church, then.
Well, I'm all in favor of that. I just, I go back to the property across the street from the congregational church, an old church. I don't see the difference here, and I understand why we're treating them differently.
So the difference is this, this, these properties are actually adjacent, so it's the church and then the rectory right next to it, which would be no different than Bethany, St. Rita's. The congregational church, that property north of Sarah Madge Boulevard is no longer the church, it's no longer their sanctuary with the rectory. It's, it's a, I don't know what they're using it as, I really don't, but.
I don't either.
It's just separated and it's detached, and I think when it's detached, I think you can, especially with where it is, I think that you can justifiably treat it differently. So I kind of see it as apples and oranges. Although it is two churches, I do think it's a bit different.
And it is commercial, it's.
And it's right in the commercial district, right?
Okay.
Okay, um.
Support that.
Continuing here, this is, um, East Sierra Madre Boulevard. This is the area where there are condos. If you recall, there are condos, there may be some single family here, but there's some apartment buildings and condos. Uh, the recommendation was that it goes from residential entrepreneur land use designation to RH with the overlay, with the RE overlay. So you could still have the RE function and uses, but the underlying zone would be now RH instead of RP.
Now, i- is there any entrepreneurial use there today? There is?
There's a dentist, yeah, there's, that's the one I.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It makes, uh.
I know of, yeah. I think that's, actually, that's on Sarah Place. Yeah, here, this little corner here, there is an office and residential here.
Yeah, it's no longer an office, I don't think. I think it's just residential now. It used to be like, yeah, like a travel.
Yeah.
Like a travel business. I think it's just a house now.
See, and that, that just raises a question, though. Do we want, do we really want to extend entrepreneurial, commercial that far? I mean, uh, I can see close to Baldwin, yeah, there's the dentist there, the, in the, uh, whatever that building's called, but if, if really none of that today is entrepreneurial, do we really want it to be? I mean, what was the discussion with the?
It was in the Berchtesgaden.
There's been a couple of uses there. There's, there's a dentist now, and there was that one that was an office building. The other thing is, you, part of the overlays, before anyone can use it as a commercial use, they have to do a CUP. So it's not like you're just gonna have, you know, strip clubs open up overnight or something like that. And, and it's also, it's not all commercial uses, it's limited to professional office uses. So it, I, I really think it's, it's appropriate. You're gonna get a smattering thing. The other thing is now that we have home business, it, you know, there's sort of the, this is sort of a middle ground between a home business and commercial use, pure commercial zoning, that's, the, the zone, the, the difference is already gray. I, I don't think it's a problem.
I don't really have a problem with it, just.
I mean, there is that dentist, uh, office there on Sarah Madge Boulevard, and that one house on Sierra Place was a, some sort of a travel agency. I mean, I guess I don't have a huge problem with it. I don't see, I don't see those houses east of, uh, uh, what street is that? Mountain, no, that's not Mountain Trail, is it? Yeah, it's Mountain Trail.
So, I, I'm sorry, I don't understand, is it the, we want, there's a proposal to make it from RE to RH with the overlay or without the overlay?
With the overlay.
Oh, oh, okay.
Okay, then that's, now, but, now cross, uh, Mountain Trail, the little cross hatching there.
Right. It was actually, that same, that same idea was, uh, recommended by the steering committee for these three properties here, again, from RE to RH with the RE overlay. These are single-family residences. And the planning commission disagreed that this, this should go to RH. They felt that this should remain, actually should be changed to match what's existing, which is RL, without the overlay, and also including these here, which are also single-family homes.
I would tend to agree.
Wait, say that again. I, I got, I got lost there. The proposal is to.
The, the committee, um, recommended that these three properties here.
The RH.
Be changed from RE, the current RE designation, to an RH designation with the RE overlay. The planning commission felt that it should actually stay as is, which is, um, the RE designation. Basically, actually, no, I'm sorry, I apologize. It should be changed to RL to reflect what's on the ground today, which are single-family homes. Without the overlay.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
And then they also, the overlay was also recommended for this, these two lots here, which are also single-family, and they felt that there should not be an overlay here. It should be RL without the overlay, so they.
So the recommendation, make all of that RL without an overlay?
That is correct.
Yay.
Okay.
I like that.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's how it is now.
I, I think the overlay or not overlay really sort of doesn't matter. But you've got, and that corner is a sort of a major corner. Across the street to the south is an apartment building.
The Ballyhigh, yeah.
To the east is a large condo development. So, three of those houses, or there's three single-family houses there. One is historic, the, the, the one to the east. So that's not gonna change.
One right next to the condos.
Whether, whatever the, the zoning is. But it seems like when you've got a thing surrounded by multifamily, I don't know why you'd have a little pocket of single-family zoning. You know, it seems to me that that, if you don't want to do the, the overlay, that's fine. Although it's right next to Montecito, it seems to me the overlay makes sense, but if people don't think overlays, I don't really think that makes any difference there. But that chunk, that sort of square of the three bigger parcels, to me seems like should be RH. The, the ones marching up are tiny little lots that it, you know, those, those can be RL, it doesn't really matter. They're not gonna be developed in any, any form other than what they are now.
Yeah, so I, I guess I would just disagree. I, you know, the Ballyhigh to me sticks out. You know, it's always to me, I grew up right down the street from it. I've always, um, no offense to the owner, disliked it and wished it was single-family. And if you go across the street from the Ballyhigh, it's single-family. If you go north of it, it's single-family. That corner was Bob Young, is Bob Young's house with the Flamingos. I mean, it's really, it's really a residential area, and then you, John Hut, John's right, I mean, then you have the condo co- you have that condo development, which I grew up, uh, just south of, that is there, and I just would hate to see that condo complex have a nice little partner next to it, which would be a, a smaller condo complex or apartment building. I just, I wouldn't want that on, I mean, that is a major corner, Mountain Trail and Sarah Madge Boulevard, and, uh, with that overlay, you could see, you know, the Flamingo Bob's house with some of the houses north of it becoming developed into multifamily, then having that corner multifamily. I'd, I would just rather not have that, and from a, I guess, a personal preference standpoint, but.
RL, no overlay?
So I'm fine with doing the RL, and just noting that, you know, the Ballyhigh and the condo complex will, will continue to be there, but I just, I don't want to give them any more.
Yeah.
I agree. Yes.
I agree.
Okay.
Good point.
RH.
Are we done?
Almost.
We're almost there. Okay.
Just a couple more things down here. Again, it's currently RE, and, and the proposal is that it would go to RH, um, and then, and these are also RE, and then would, would change to RL, so single-family.
That H, H on top and L at the bottom?
With an overlay, I'm sorry.
RH for that, that says H?
RH on the, on top.
Yes, this would be RH with an overlay, and RL with an overlay.
What's there today?
It's currently a dentist office, and then south of that are single-family homes.
Right.
The RH part is.
So apartment building and then dentist office, is that correct?
That's, that's why we did that, to match sort of what's there.
So in other words, keep the apartment high density on the top corner and make it RL below it.
And, but with an overlay, you were saying?
Right, that is correct.
So that the dentist office and, which I think makes sense.
Okay.
And then it would match across the street also, 'cause that's, you know, the, the overlay.
Yeah.
And the very last thing is something that was, uh, adopted by the city council, I believe it was earlier this year, was this, um, the rezone, I don't know if you recall, but this was originally zoned R1 with an RL land use. And basically, the proposal is that, of course, now it's municipal, and down here, this portion would be constructed open space because of the rec center and the park facilities that are in the lower part. So C yards above in the basins, and then, of course, park on the south side, so.
But the one thing we, we, we were gonna do, but we never got around to, was the city sold off the land to the nursery school, and we never got the legal description of that, and so the very, um, what is that? Southeast corner of the part that's going from municipal to, uh, open space needs to be changed to institutional for the nursery school. So, and I don't know where the legal, we just need to haunt the legal description of that, so you can.
We have, yeah, we do have that, and actually, I, I thank you, John, I should have pointed that out. This, this is slightly incorrect, that, it is correct, this corner here should be institutional in the zoning map. You, you already approved that change in the zone, so we will reflect that here. This actually does not show that, so.
Is there a reason why we'd want to keep the, uh, the post office on Baldwin, uh, commercial? I mean, is that? I guess is that?
I, I think it's a good commercial site.
Yeah, probably is. I mean, to the extent that the federal government decides to get out of there, which they might.
They might.
Yeah. So I think it's eventual, it's a matter of when.
Just a matter of when, you're probably right. All right.
That kind of leads into a question I had. I can't tell if that's the old Howie's Market, it's not part of the overlay zone, flag lot?
It would be on Baldwin and Sarah Madge Boulevard, yeah.
Yeah, because once we, once they no longer become a market, we won't have an area to put another supermarket here in Sierra Madre?
Well, no, it's commercial.
It's commercial.
It's still commercial.
Yeah, we've kept it commercial. Okay.
The land use map, I think we're, we're done, unless you have any other questions.
I was gonna, no, I was gonna open it up, the land use map for, uh, public comment questions. Unless, Letizia, did you have say, something to say on that?
No.
No? Uh, we'll open up for public comment.
My name's Pat Karenitros. I live at one forty East Allegra, between Baldwin and Mountain. and Mountain Trail. And I was here about a month ago, talking in support of the historic survey that you're doing, primarily because my concern was about the house to the east of me, which is 124. And it is historic, it was built in 1912. It has sold. And it is empty. There's no activity there, there's nobody living there, there's nothing going on currently. And I found out that it has been purchased by BVS Realty Partners in Burbank. Its lot size is 21,740 square feet. And of course, my concern is that there will be an application for partition, or subdivision, or tear down. And I would hope that we continue to try and preserve our historic neighborhoods, which I consider Allegria 1. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that just sold, right?
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Herrabadian and council members. I would like to point out that the proliferation of mansionization due to the man, the demand of wealthy Chinese citizens has recently taken on a new urgency. As we know from a recent Los Angeles Times article, the Chinese government has begun enforcing the restrictions against taking large sums of money out of China. Consequently, the developers are trying to complete as many projects as possible before the funds from China are diminished or run out. Each of you has diligently worked on keeping your campaign promises to preserve Sierra Madre by designing a new general plan that will protect our city's uniqueness. I would like to bring to your, I wanted to bring to your attention tonight, three items that are in the land use section that you are now about to review. But after talking to a couple people earlier, I have decided that two of these items are not significant. You have a handout that I have presented you with that lists these items. And again, I say that the first two have turned out not to be significant, but the third one is, is very disturbing to me. It is sections L19.4 and L19.7, which consider a new water impact fee to apply to new residential dwelling units and additions to existing development to fund water fixture retrofits of existing homes and other water conservation measures which aren't specified. This is just what we don't need, another tax, another fee, another way to get money from the citizens. We already pay large impact fees when we take out permits. To add another fee to build a house is just not right. The people of Sierra Madre have spoken clearly in the past by rejecting attempts to increase our taxes. I urge you, and by the way, I don't really think this money would ever get used for what it says it should be used for here. But I urge you to remove L19.4 and L19.7 from the plan. And please remember that the developers know that we are at least a year away from adopting a new general plan. So anything that can be done to expedite the process should be done. Thank you for your time, and remember, the time is of the essence.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Well, I'm, yeah, I, I just wanted to comment on Mr. Gold's handout, because I think the first two are important. And especially, Mrs. Karometros, on the second item, require a minimum lot size. And I, when we look at the residential zoning that we have, and I, I don't know if this, if we should put, deal with this in the general plan part of it, or we get to zoning, but I'm very concerned, and this was new to me, what she just said is that that property was bought by a development company. And I really think we need to take some kind of action to, to discourage subdividing these lots. So I, I'm not sure what tools we have available to us. I mean, is it a possibility of putting a moratorium on subdividing until we decide whether we're going to do a historic survey and complete it, now that we've gone out to bid on it? Or, you know, do we tackle that right now and, and put something in the general plan that says to possibly increase the minimum lot area? Because I just think that, that'd be just a disaster to see some of those nice, large lots on estate-type homes chopped up into smaller ones. And when I, you know, just glancing, I can't tell from the map, but I can see that there, there are quite a few of large lots that would qualify. I mean, I know where, you know, Mrs. Karometros' lot, well, the one she's talking about is 124 Allegria there. And you can see that, you know, north of the street, all those could be subdivided. All over the place, there's lots. So I, I'm just wondering if we should just increase the, the minimum lot area, just in general?
I, I couldn't agree more.
So what are some of the tools that we can look at at this point?
We can put it, something in the general plan, and then have this, once again, the zoning would have to match our, our general plan.
Then again, the timing issue, you know, I, I don't know how it would align.
Or we can, can we do a zoning before?
You actually don't have to wait for the general plan. This can be done at the zoning ordinance level, and the planning commission is currently discussing this, this very issue of, it started, it was prompted really by the size of homes that trigger the requirement for a conditional use permit. As you know, it's currently 4,000, the threshold. They are considering lowering that to a different number, to a lower number, although they have not yet decided what number that should be. As part of that discussion, they also are talking about and considering how maximum allowable floor area is calculated, based on lot size. And in this issue of increasing the minimum lot size can also be part of that discussion. You know, it is something that they are aware of and sensitive to in terms of how that can allow for subdivision of lots. So they are actually considering those issues at, at the moment, aside from the general plan update. So at the zoning level, you can actually do that. And that, those are some of the, the tools that you have to achieve that.
And what would the timeframe be for that?
They started discussing it, and I believe it was October. And we are going back, they had, they asked staff to provide some further information. And staff is going back at the second meeting in January, January 15th, if I'm not mistaken, is when they would be discussing it further. And they may or may not make a decision at that point. You know, they, if, if they are ready to see an amendment to the R1, staff will then bring back a draft amendment to the R1. And then if they are ready to, to recommend that, they'll recommend that to city council, and then it will come to you, so...
Just another point, though, is, I mean, with regarding lot splits, we still have the water, you know, the moratoria in place. So, right now, it'd be impossible to, to do that today. So maybe that buys us some time.
That is correct.
That's a good point.
In fact, as you know, it, it, it already prevent a couple of subdivisions that were coming before you from actually being approved.
Yeah, so we, so we do have time. Okay, so I forgot that that's...
So as long, they're working on it, and we're talking about the buildable, buildable area, right?
The maximum allowable floor area.
And increasing the minimum lot size.
One more thing, though, is, again, another concern I have is even, even say, in this particular case, with this particular house, I don't know if the house is truly historic by state historical standards, but it is a beautiful, old craftsman house. And even if the developer didn't want to subdivide it, they still may consider demolishing it. And I'm wondering, at what point can we, you know, do something about that? Should we wait until we get, decide if we're gonna follow through with the historic survey, then maybe put a moratorium on any demolitions past, for houses past a certain date, or something like that? I mean, could we do that?
Could we do a moratorium, just to put everything on, on halt until we get the general plan approved?
When you say everything, what would that?
Well, I mean...
Well, you've already got the moratorium on any land use approvals, you know, to the extent that there isn't a water connection.
Water, right.
So, and that's in place for another 18 months. And, and during that period of time, staff has a long list of these kinds of changes to the zoning plan, and others, including design review, that, trying to march forward as quickly as possible. The idea of putting a moratorium on tear downs, for example, while you are trying to study what preservation measures you might want to include, like, for example, putting a moratorium or freeze on houses that are at least a certain age. Yes, I think you could do it.
Okay, good. Let's do that.
Should we agendize that, then?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Because you, it would also, it's, it's permissible to actually require that, you know, houses above, you know, that are of a certain age can't be demolished without, you know, review or a particular permit, go to design review, or get some kind of a special permit in order to be demolished. I've, I've written those kinds of ordinances before. They're, they're, they're perfectly legal, so there's no reason you couldn't also do a moratorium for the period of time it would take to study where you might want to draw that line, and then, so, you could do it, yes.
Okay, well, why don't, you know, why don't we just, we all agree to just agendize that and have it brought up quickly?
Very quickly. Okay.
So just to, do we want to talk about Mr. Gold?
Well, do we want to, I was gonna say, we can do it either in, I have two, two questions here. So we have the low-density and medium-density chapter to go through, okay? We have a couple suggestions. We can go ahead and do that tonight, and get through this, which is fine. Or we can decide not to do it tonight, if you guys don't want. Now it's 10 o'clock, we have to vote whether we want to go past 10.
I would not like to go, but whatever you guys want. This is real comp, the whole floor, floor area ratio, I need to be...
Yeah, maybe we need more.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mean, these are, this is a pretty important chapter, and I don't know if, you starting at 10 o'clock, you know, from 10 to 10:30, we, we rarely have our most productive conversations. So, because I do think that there have been some important things that have been raised, and stuff that we'll probably have to wrestle with. So, what do you guys think?
I don't want to delay the general plan, I want to say that. So how can we squeeze this in without...
Can we put it on the next...
I'd even be willing to do a special meeting, too.
Oh, don't say that.
Not before Christmas.
Options are a special meeting in the month of December, because this is your last meeting until January 9th.
I just have the evil eye.
The first meeting in January is, is already jam-packed. We have 610 Baldwin Court coming back then. Second meeting in January had something major on it, and I can't remember what it is at the moment.
Can we do a special meeting?
But we can do special meetings are, are at the council's prerogative.
I don't think we want to do that.
I don't think that's gonna get us where we need to go.
Well, what do we recommend here?
I don't mind doing the special meeting. I don't, I don't want to affect the timeline here, but I agree that starting this at 10 o'clock is not going to be particularly productive.
I think we should do it in the first two weeks of January. Let's have a special meeting. And if we can put anything else in there for the general plan that we need to get done that night, too?
And the planning commission might be done with everything that they need to be done with the planning, excuse me, with the general plan by then, or no?
First week of January, you think there's enough? The planning commission's still reviewing some chapters.
The planning commission should be done at their next Thursday, actually, unless they, they don't have a lot left, unless they continue, you know, that, and are not ready to make a decision.
What are they looking at right now? Can I ask?
They're looking at noise and seismic, and they're going to be looking at the glossary and appendix. So they don't have a whole lot.
And they don't really need to do the glossary or appendix. You know, I mean, they can look at it, but they don't need to go page by page.
Is it perfect?
Well, they need to do whatever review, whatever review they feel is appropriate.
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever view they feel is appropriate, they need to do.
What's, what's your prerogative?
So it's very possible that it's being done.
January 6 is currently open.
January would be okay if we had to do it. Okay.
January 6 room is available.
January 6?
Okay.
January 6 is...
Oh, no, no, absolutely. Look, we, we are going, we are going to have, we are going to have public comment. But Mr. Hud can't, can't take part in that, but everyone else can. But, no, we're gonna have public comment. But I want to get, I want to make sure that we're, we have consensus that we're not going to go forward with, with the discussion tonight. And January 6, which is a...
January 6, special meeting. It's a Tuesday, first Tuesday.
Okay.
Of January.
You okay with that?
Absolutely. As far as I'm concerned, this is, should be our top priority, get this general plan done as soon as possible.
We were talking about on the agenda, too?
We can get the moratorium on that agenda also.
Tackle that, too, sure.
Great. We'll open this up again for public comment.
Before we do, can we just address Mr. Gold's last comment?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. So, I mean, I do think, though, that, you know, Mr. Gold brings up a good point, and I, all I was, all I was gonna say is that this is something that we will definitely discuss when we, when we tackle this. I mean, I think that he brings up a good point. I mean, it might not be the best thing. I, you know, it just depends.
I just, I'll just comment, I don't think it's harmful having it in the general plan, because the general plan is just asking us to consider it.
It's just considering it, it doesn't say adopt it.
Right.
And also, I think, I think it may not be just for, you know, every new residential dwelling. It might be, you know, whatever, but you might want to put that stipulation in for some construction. So that's just for some types of construction. So you might just want to keep that in there, just in case we need to do that. That's all. That's a good point.
Thank you, yeah, it was a good point. Ms. Hud?
First, let me say, on the lot size on R1 and the lot splitting thing, one of the things to keep in mind is, when we talk about making the zoning consistent with the general plan, keep in mind that there are sub-districts in R1. So, in the general plan, we have everything single-family, that's not hillside or canyon, RL. But in zoning, there's sub-districts that have different minimum lot sizes.
Yeah.
So one of the simple fixes that we could do really easily, say, if there's areas that are, you know, 7,500 square foot minimum, that we think should be 11,000.
Like Allegria.
You just, yeah, you just change the, the sub-district on, on the zoning map. That's a pretty easy and quick fix. And the issue, the other thing that Mr. Gold brought up about the, the slope affecting the floor area, I think is a really important thing. You know, when we were doing the hillside ordinance, subdivision was the big thing. And just as, I was talking to Councilmember Capocha earlier, you can't predict what's going to be the big issue. Well, then, subdivision, everyone was worried about, and, oh, well, we'll deal with other stuff later. So this is one of those instances where it really is important. And I think there's a lot of stuff that needs to go into how you define that. And I think the planning commissions, they're biting just on R1. We need to go to that, back to the hillside for that. But that's a similar kind of concept.
Agreed.
With regard to the multifamily, I think that the way that the commission looked at this, and the way we evolved it, is the basic premises was, we like the town as it is. So the concept is, unless there's a really good reason to have the zoning different from, and when I say zoning, the development standards, the general plan, the zoning, everything, different than... different than what's existing today, you should leave it so that it's exactly as it is today. And so, when we went out and looked at a lot of the multifamily, we tried to see what is actually built, not what our current zoning is, or what our current general plan is, but what is actually built. And so, the proposals that we came up with, that the planning commission went along with, are basically to take the RM or R2, and apply standards that are much like they are, and the same with R3, or RH. The big change, besides the overlay that we talked about earlier, is to impose floor area limits. It sort of floored me, that we have floor area limits for single-family houses, but not duplexes or multifamily. There's setbacks, there's coverage, and there's height, which you can sort of compute into FAR, but nothing that's appropriate. And if you go around and look at some of the new development on multifamily, a lot of it is sort of bulbous and big. And I think one of the problems, another issue that we had as a town, is, the buzzword was density, so we fought density, we didn't deal with bulk enassing. So, you get not very many units, but you get big units. And they have similar, well, they have impacts, whether they're similar or not. For me, I think they're worse, because not only you have imposing massing, that I think is really unfair to the neighbors, but you also have a changing in culture in town, because all we build is big houses that only, you know, rich people can afford. And one of the things that I think is really great about town, is we have a multitude of different housing stock, we have businesses, we have all sorts of weird and funky, from small to big, rental and ownership, and if we just limit density, and not the bulk enassing, we run the risk of having, you know, on one hand McMansions, and on the other hand, McCondos. And you're going to have a place where the development pressures are going to drive to all really expensive housing stock, and it's going to very much change the culture.
John, can I ask a question on that really quickly? So, just to be clear, do you think the general plan is where you do that work, though? Or do you think it's, you know, do you have a floor area ratio specified in your general plan, or is that something that we, because we've debated that up here, you know, do we do it in the general plan, or do we do it later?
In the real world, I would have that in the zoning.
Right.
But, but let me tell you this, the general plan designation for East Montecito is artisan mixed use. It's still zoned industrial. It never was updated from the 96 plan. There's discussions in the general plan about determining floor area things that have never been done. So, I think the thought was, look, this is something that's pretty important, let's just do it.
Yeah.
And that's why we came up with that. We, and then we went and looked at what was actually built, we looked at the carrying capacity of different-sized lots, and that's how we got the sliding scale on RH. Most RM lots are really uniform, they're over on Suffolk, and they're about, all about 7,500 square feet, so those are pretty standard. If we expanded RM a lot into big lots, then we'd have to tinker with that, but none of that's been done. So, the RM, I think, is pretty straightforward, the RH, I know there's somewhat of an incentive to lot consolidation, but that mirrors the current zoning, because the current zoning allows more density, as you get a bigger piece. But in my experience, lot consolidation happens with planners who do housing elements. In the real world, it is really tough to do lot consolidation, and I don't think the minor incentives that we've baked into this are going to lead to more lot consolidation. If somebody owns a lot next to one, they're going to consolidate, because it's easier to develop, whether there's an incentive in there or not. But what these do, is they allow for a better, a better regulation of size, based on the lot, because if you cram as much floor area on a small lot as you do on a big lot, it's going to look worse, and it's going to impact its neighbors more. And so, that was, trying to reflect that reality, is why we came up with that sliding scale.
And it, I mean, it wasn't just one meeting, it was probably two or three meetings, and we went out and actually took pictures, I don't know if y'all remember, and we brought pictures back of, this is what we liked, this is what we didn't like.
And none of these, none of the floor areas, even if you take the sliding scale up, are very high compared to our neighboring cities.
Right.
Or compared to what's being built around. If you look at, like, the new condos out on the west end of Sierra Madre Boulevard, that have sort of a driveway down the middle, and then a little loop driveway and a tree in the middle, those are, let me see, the FAR on that was .79, and we're talking about a thing that would never get to that high.
Yeah.
And most other cities, South Pasadena, and I'm not talking about Pasadena, or LA, or big cities, I'm talking about little cities, La Cuenca and South Pasadena have higher limits than this. So, these aren't limits that are really high, I think they're, they're, match what we have, and is our existing built, and I think they'll help prevent, you know, big McCondos.
Yeah.
Just like we have, we have concerns about McMansions in the hillside area.
Well, I just want to say, too, is, just thank you for, you know, while you were on the general plan steering committee, the analysis you did with the data that tells us what we really have, because I know that helped me, I forgot that you did that, but looking at it again, gave me a lot more confidence that the numbers that were proposed are very reasonable for Sierra Madre, but we'll have to take a look at it, and just, you know, make sure that, you know, we, now what we know, we're anticipating future trends. But I do want to point out about lot consolidation, because you know, we just had one recently that, you know, came to us, and we approved on Mariposa, that's a Mursall development, where they bought two, and again, they're demolishing and building, what, five or six units on those two lots, so it does happen.
It does, but keep in mind, there's, there's no incentive, FAR, right now, to do that. It happened anyhow. It, they will happen.
And even.
Anytime somebody can, they will, because it makes it easier.
Sure, but the point is, what you're proposing, or what the general plan steering committee is proposing, when you look at the numbers, like you say, it's not that bad compared to some of the things that have already been built in town, so.
Can I just thank John Head, because he really did help us at the general plan, and tonight, and I know that we gave you a hard time at the general plan, when you first.
We're very good at that, yeah.
You know, when they, when you first introduced us, but, you know, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it, and thank you for coming tonight, too.
Yeah, I, you know, I have to have special favors with my wife to get out of childcare, so I can't promise that I can make it to your next special meeting on this.
We'll send a car, January 6, you'll be there.
Gift certificates for babysitting.
Yeah, no.
But if you have questions in there, feel free to give me a call.
Great, thank you, John, appreciate it.
So much.
And everyone else, Mr. Gold, and, you know, Barbara Lee, of course, you know, appreciate your comments. So, we, we could, at this point, take items for future agendas before we go home. Anybody other than what we've mentioned tonight? All right. Well, the special meeting is now scheduled for January 6th, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, goodnight, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.